Okay ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM. The rise for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the giant states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and thirdly, in thy name, amen.
We'll start with the roll call, please.
Mr. Book?
Present.
Mrs. Thompson? Mrs. McHugh?
Present.
Mrs. Durst?
Present.
Mrs. Botsing?
Present.
Mrs. Rosenbaum?
Present.
Mrs. Joy?
Present.
Show all members of the board present. Are there any amendments for the agenda this evening?
No.
Hearing no amendments, entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt the agendas presented.
Sorry.
Motion by Mrs. McHugh, seconded by Mrs. Durst. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried. Move on to the consent agenda.
Under the consent agenda, you're approving minutes from the regular meeting of March 22nd, 2021 as presented. You're also approving general fund bills in the amount of $273.921.3 cents. And AP checks in the amount of $18,607.11, for a total of $292,528.4 cents. With checks numbered 66029 through 66417. And AC transfers in the amount of $509,877.13, for a total of $802,405.17, and no checks voided. And additional bills in the amount of $6,593.80, with checks numbered 66118 through 66121, and no checks voided. Under personnel, retirement of Mark Pramone, we certainly congratulate him after third years. The hetering of Jennifer Baranowski, junior senior high kitchen cashier. And Rebecca Keeler, secondary's daycare provider. And I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agendas presented.
So far.
Motion by Mrs. Durst, supported by Mrs. Botsing, to accept the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried. On to reports, and under A, Claire Jackson thanking you for 25 years of service. Claire, will you join us up front for a moment, please?
So we want to officially thank you for the 25 years of plus of service at Memphis for everything you've done for our students and everything. We appreciate everything. Good luck with your retirement and joy.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Congratulations Claire, that's a wonderful accomplishment. Next up, we have Jimmy Saif and Angela Saif.
Just hold the volume for a second.
Alright, so here we have Jimmy Saif and Angela Saif, and they put on our unique clip golf outing every year. And they are here to present us with a check. You know what? Well, why don't you say, "I would have held it."
What's that?
We've been doing it, you know, but it's not.
Did you want me to say that? Okay, so we're planning another golf outing for September, so Jimmy and Angela are wonderful. Jimmy has students in Memphis, and he owned his company, put on a great golf outing for our school. And this year, they're presenting us with a check for $15,530.
Alright, thank you. Thank you so much for the stamps. You guys do great work for us, and you're new to outdoor equipment, see you again. Mrs. Hankins, we're gonna move into administrative reports. You can go first if you like.
Sure, then.
Thank you.
Alright. So, you know, it's the end of the year, we're wrapping up one school year, and we are starting another. On March 24th, we were able to hold our kindergarten kickoff. We had about 55 families attend. It was virtual this year because of COVID, but we had a great turnout. In your notes, I put a copy of the presentation and a recording of the presentation, if you have any questions about that, if you have to answer them later. Um, testing has started this week, our fifth graders have completed their English Language Arts. I attached the link to the calendar, and our four fifth graders have to take four tests, they have to take PLA, math, science, and social studies. So think of that over these next couple of weeks, since they work really hard. It's a lot of work, but we're proud of the work we've done so far this year and over the last few years, so we're excited to see those results. I included a quick snippet of a video and some information about the Child Abuse and Abuse Council and a presentation that they've been putting on this week for our kindergartens through fifth graders. They talk about child abuse, child safety, and cyberbullying, it's really empowering the students with what they need to keep themselves safe. There's a great education piece in there. And it's going to have some more information about what kids read now, our students have all selected their books, and they'll all be gifted with nine books this summer that'll be mailed to their house every two weeks. And they'll be able to just quickly log into a website or a text message to say they brought the book, and then they'll be getting the books after that. Sandy Hebwell and I worked to use Title I funds to also buy summer bridge books for our students. So every Memphis student, except for those who knocked it out, which I think was only about five, will receive summer bridge books, which are a review of the last school year and some latest foundation work for the next school year. Those will be sent home with kids before the last day of school. And we are working on a summer school program, I've had 10 interested teachers. Actually 11 once my teacher's husband's a teacher, and he said he'd do it too, so we're gonna meet next week to make the summer school plan. I included a link to the resources we use for the Eraditating Racism Initiative, if you have any questions about that. We are able to do fifth grade camp, although we'll look a little different this year, they are not allowing the students to spend the night, but they'll get to go for two full days, long days, and participate in a lot of the activities that they normally would. And this year, they also get to do zip line, which is something they haven't done before, so we're excited to see how that turns out. I listed some things that we'll be doing next week, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, but I'm not gonna talk very much about those, because I've seen there's new teachers here. And it's a surprise. If you have any questions, if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Hankins, any other questions from the board?
Thank you.
Hold on, thank you.
I just wanted to add too, I was able to sit in on the presentations for the kindergarten last weekend, this week, Child Abuse Council. And it's fantastic, this does replace the Babylonian project that they used to do. They used to do that presentation one day for large groups. Now being able to go into each classroom for two different 45-minute sessions has been outstanding. My daughter's in kindergarten, so we are able to have some conversation. She picked up on everything they're talking about, we're able to, you know, just identify the different risk factors and safety measures, so it's been great. And I did put in Friday finals, but we are, I think, one of the two in the county that are having this program, so it's outstanding, so thank you, Mr. Hankins.
Yep, thank you. Along with the Babylonian, when we did first grade and third grade, this is every class and every grade, also every kid gets the resource they need to keep themselves safe.
Thank you. Mr. Graff, do your student high school, please.
Thank you, school board, for having me here tonight. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out here that I listed in my report. First off, definitely we want to congratulate two of our seniors, Seth and Joy Getner, and don't mind the typo on Getner there. But they were named to the MAC all academic team, Class C and D this year, so very big accomplishment for those two gentlemen. There will be a slideshow presentation that they release, I believe it's May 4th. So as soon as I get that link and information, I'll make sure you guys have that. What they'll do is they'll kind of show all the students that were elected for the MAC A through D, Class A through D. Our two gentlemen will be there as representatives, so congratulations to those two. A couple other things, I'm gonna go back to this zero hour intervention, so I'll come back to that. SAT testing last week, actually, two weeks ago, yeah, two weeks ago, April 13th. Tomorrow, we actually do have some makeup testing for those who were not here. And we also have PSAT 8, 9, and 10, and we're going tomorrow, it's a busy, busy day for testing tomorrow. Mr. Corbett, who I believe is still in the back in his office there, he's knocking barrier, there's some boxes at this point, but he has been planning this thing for a couple of days now, so he's still back there working. He's done an amazing job, so kudos to him on that testing. Hopefully, we will have most of our students tested by tomorrow, maybe he has nothing on that, it's time to speak. Another one to point out there, interviews, we do have a college advisor who is, this is their second year, and the program's only two years. So we were able to interview five candidates for the position for next year. We think we have chosen a great candidate, we just have to wait and see until MSU announces whether that candidate has selected our school. So we select candidates, and the candidates also will interview a bunch of different schools, they'll select their top schools, we'll select our top candidates, and hopefully be able to match. So we're waiting for that, and for those results should be here soon. In the meantime, Mrs. Nowitzki, Claire, has also been really working hard with our FAFSA completions and college, not just our college, but all of our seniors and plans for after high school. And we have even began to finish up our quarter for our senior signs, I don't wanna get too much into that yet, but we will be having some good ways to honor those students before they leave us this summer. A couple other things to point out, oh, this is another one, the board has talked about this in the past, the chess club is back, it is revitalized. Miss Dana is running the show now, and she has a lot of great students involved, a lot of junior high students, a few high school students even, because the chess club is meeting weekly. They might need to give some chess tournaments here sooner or later, but she said they might not be ready yet, but they are getting there again. So a lot of young students in there, so hopefully that builds the program from here on. So Miss Dana's very excited, tries to do chess boards, and it looks like it's gonna be a program to be here today for a while. And the other revitalization is our junior senior high parent club, the Old Jacket Pals. The Old Jacket Pals will be, are kicking off their revitalization with our Teacher Appreciation Week in a couple of weeks. And then from there, they're partnering with our PDAS team to honor our students academically, for, I think it was Mr. Corbett in there, I'm forgetting. They're gonna honor us academically, honor our students academically for their achievements this year, as well as their citizenship and other PDAS-related accolades that they may receive. So the junior, the pals club, pals parent club is really gonna be huge for us here, it's something we have had a lot of support from the parent club in the past few years. I'm glad to have them back here at Junior Senior High School. Should be a bonus for all of our students, our staff, and our school. Final last couple of things, zero hour, some power began last week. These are science, PLA, math, for both junior high school and senior high school students. They're either running a class in the morning or a class after school. Credit recovery for high school students and kids, and skill building for our junior high students, this is one of our responses to the pandemic and the shutdowns and things we've had. We're hoping that zero and some power can catch up our students up. And of course, as always, we had, we said, our intervention continuing for any students that need some time just to do some homework, to catch up on credits, to work with the teacher. And we have a truck, and we're encouraging not only our senior, but all our students that might be heading to the tent there as well. Couple of links I have there, there's a good coffee with the principal, an update to the April newsletter, and a very special shout out to our baseball team from Brad Allen. He was a member of the A-4 Tigers, well, championship team, and was once an announcer for the Tigers. He is, I believe, a not good friend of Adam Ricker, and Mr. Ricker was able to give him to shout out to us from his home by his own house. Shout out to our baseball team, kind of lived in their spirits a little bit, really started off like a good wing trip too. So those are some fun things there. I do have a link to my strategic plan, if you want, I can do it now, but if you want, I'm gonna wait, I think it's the next, it's a kind of like the agenda, I can wait until that.
How do we wait until that?
Yeah, that's all that I have right now for you, if you have any questions.
I have one for Mr. Graff, do you plan on announcing the parent club to the U of M next summer?
Yes, today was, we just kind of revealed them to the teachers today and the staff, so we'll plan as by week's end to announce it to the community, just to see who is interested in joining. I just wanna make sure that we have all red dicks in the row, so before we get a surplus of maybe mail or calls, we have everything set for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Graff, how much attendance have we had this Saturday, you mentioned, for students that are catching up?
Well, Saturday has been pretty productive. I would say, well, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, we had, for last Saturday, sign up over almost 35 kids. Now, we signed them up, we called parents, whether they do show up or not, it is, but we, Mrs. Stark said that she did have maybe 20 kids this last Saturday. So it gets bigger and bigger every week, I think, especially as we get closer to them in school year and other law schools, especially high school level, wanting to make them credit. And that's the best way to do it, be four hours interrupted with technology, with the teacher, so the numbers are pretty good for Saturday.
Excellent. Anything else for Mr. Graff? Mr. O'Keefe? Let's talk about the athletic department, please.
Hello everyone, good evening. Well, it's been a while since we had a chance to meet, we had our winter season, winter season actually ended over spring break, which has been ironic, but we had a lot of success going into, before spring break took place, and then over spring break as well. And I just want to go over some of the highlight points. Our wrestling team had two state qualifiers, Nathan Peters, our junior, finished seventh in state. He lost the match, came back, was able to win a match, and finished, like I said, in seventh in state, you're very proud of him, he actually received all state honors. And then Troy Charlie, also finished 12th in the state. And so we're very well represented at the state qualifiers for wrestling. As you mentioned, you know, I could talk an hour about, there's, yeah, Mark Pringle's done here, he's 28 district champions, and many, 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 many state qualifiers. So he is gonna be very much masterful, and to the point of, before he leaves, he's doing a great job of making sure that his kids are all getting the type of recognition he deserves. So Mark Pringle's done a great job, and we'll do our best to try to kind of replace him from our. Back to our sports, bowling, we had two state qualifiers, Tara Peters and Kate Bourne. Tara Peters made it all the way to the state finals, and she finished 11th in the state, so we're very proud of her, I think her last series, I'm sure that's their alma mater, Crystal Bobby, I remember, but he was like 568. So she had a great season ending series for her, to represent a bowling team. Unfortunately, I don't know if it went through Michelle, last, looks like she'll be stuck behind as well, so we'll be looking to try to fill her position. She carried that program this year, tried her the hardest year with all the COVID issues, COVID restrictions, and so on, and she'll be sorely missed as Mark. Girls' basketball, I mean, if anybody had a chance to see what they've done this year, very young, and we've won senior, it was sort of an up and down year with COVID, losing players or something like that, we didn't have a player come back from injury. I see Coach Mark Carlson in his third year, and it's only his third year of coaching here in Memphis, he's taken our girls' basketball team to the district championship. So we were very, very excited for them, unfortunately, it was an honor that was short-lived, as they were found in quarantine, unfortunately, the day of the championship game. So very heartbreaking, I had your old Mark over everywhere he works, and we're talking to girls via to the phone, and just a heart wrenching moment for all, for everyone. But the girls, the success they had in doing three of the last four games on a district semifinal, to get to the championship game, so just a fantastic season for our girls' basketball program, it's having an upswing. They actually had two girls at their seed, Aldi, I already mentioned, and Getner, and Katie Cook. So Katie was then going to enter senior year, as an honorable mention, Aldi player, she had a fantastic four-year career, and our girls are very young, they're 18th grade class coming to ninth grade next year. So the future's very bright, and big compliments to our head coach, Mr. Mark Carlson. The girls, they handled a lot of situations this year, there's not another way I would expect, they were very, very disappointed, but man, they went to the banquet the other day, you can see the future is very bright. The boys' basketball team kind of fell in the same thing, they also won the district semifinal, made it to the championship game, and they were actually awarded district champions for the first time since 1994. So they were one game, they were able to get that one game in, so that they could get to the district championship, they won a thriller against Clayville here at the Hive, and we were very excited for that. Future's very bright for the boys' basketball team, and they also had Aldi honors as well. First team went to Josh Nett, first team Aldi, congratulations, he's a junior. Second team was senior Landon Lesh, and honorable mention was seniors Tyler Carlson's team in surgery. So the boys' basketball team is very well represented. So as you can see, with wrestling, bowling, and the two basketball programs, very successful year. To get to that part of it, to finish off the winter season, we were just nominated, or had the opportunity, I think, to school board and administration, Memphis administration for allowing us to pursue the football co-op with Landmark. We turned in all the paperwork, and we were notified just last week that we, yes, had been accepted. We now have a co-op with Landmark, I can tell you Landmark's very excited, and so they will be able to start filling in with our J.D. University programs. I'm gonna meet with Coach Stump, I already met with Landmark, we'll be going over there, hopefully within the next, during the month of May, and we'll be meeting, they're already setting stuff up, organizing stuff, so that we can start to have their athletes come over and participate in that football co-op. So we're very excited about that, the other thing we're very excited about is Adam Bergen, has, one of the original people working with TAFL, has created the new TAFL Youth Football League. And with the help and assistance, I know, of Coach Stump and many, many others, they're very excited, they're getting that off. And that's, that's not only for our youth football, but it's also for youth cheerleaders, so both groups will be able to have girls and boys down there, get ready to become junior high and then high school alumni, so. I mean, that's just tremendous, I think, to the team, the group that started the TAFL several years ago, did a fantastic job of setting up a foundation that is very secure for this future group to move forward positively. As I went through, I think I said, most of you, we have been doing our COVID checks, the state's requiring us to do. The first one we did on the Monday right after spring break, so we were still on spring break, got all our coaches, got our athletes in, 90, I think, 90, it's in the high 95 percent tower, our athletes showed up, and we were still technically under spring break. Thought process was, in case we, you know, we had any COVID tests, they wouldn't spread it throughout the school. We did have, you know, quite a few, so it actually worked out positively that we were able to do it before school. And then since then, we've been doing it on Sunday afternoon, and Sunday, early Sunday evening. And, you know, I know the last two, the last three weeks, we had zero, zero COVID tests. So all our coaches have done a great job of getting all their kids to come in, our kids have done a great job, and the parents are dropping them off. We've had tremendous support, man, Botsing has helped out every minute and every single, and every single test, and all our coaches have been there supporting. So I can tell you that, you know, the coaches are still doing the temperature check, they're still doing the questionnaires, we're proud of the job that they're doing. Parents are doing a great job, if they've got any concern in notifying us, hey, my son was coughing, or my daughter had the temperature, or whatever, and it's definitely helped us. Captain Mr. Craft, Mr. Corbett, Sarah Space in the front office, I mean, they've got a job that's never-ending. I think we're still up to do it about an hour ago, notifying all the parents, and it's, you know, it's not good news that we're giving out, sometimes there's some frustration, but man, the front office has done a greater job of communicating to the kids, the coaches, the parents of, you know, what we're facing. You know, the whole COVID thing right now, with frat starters, is a never-ending story, so I think it's something that's gonna continue for quite a while. But with that being said, you know, we've lost some games because of COVID, some of the schools that we have to play are in COVID quarantine, and we ourselves have had some, of course, still doing the right thing, we'll continue to do so. That's all I have as far as.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe, any questions for Mr. O'Keefe from the board? Alright, thank you. FYI, varsity softball at 9-0, they were 11 to 10 Brown City when we walked in from the game, so hoping to get an update from parents out there.
Actually, I have a couple more things, I apologize, can I finish?
Mr. Cook? Oh, yeah, but you just stole one.
I forgot to, next page, I apologize, I got in that COVID thing. And then, as Mr. Cook said, yes, varsity softball started, they were 11-1 this so far going into today's game, they're actually tied for first place. So boys, varsity baseball, unfortunately, coaching staff and players were likely to get hurt pretty hard with COVID bug, but they've been very protected, they've been doing a great job. Lori has our track team in the weight room, and like Lori, Miss Sammore has them off and running. And girl soccer, girl soccer has lost several games because of COVID, will continue to try to get them all the games, and it's also hit our referees, so be patient, you know, we've had some situations where we lose our referees and umpires due to unfortunate COVID. We'll find out till the last minute, we'll continue to work diligently to make sure that all our game recover the best that we can. And our goal, as I said, Lori, in the track team, are utilizing the weight room, we've got different ages going on, and we're hoping that here in the next week or two, we can open it up for the offseason sport, like the football, basketball, and volleyball and other sports, so that those coaches can begin to move on and develop their athletes at our, and beyond, so thanks for inviting us, Mr. Cook. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. Mr. Cook, yeah, make some transportation, please.
Good evening. After receiving quite a few quotes on getting some fence repairs done out back, baseball back, softball back and stuff, it was not really quite as easy, because they were accomplishing, coming to play fencing up, so over recent break, we did manage to put our own fence up around the handicap parking area out back. Should have kept some of the buses off the, cars off along getting stuck, causing a lot of maintenance issues. We did do some repairs on the baseball and softball back and the fencing, where they, well, there's some gates put up, did some different things put up, so we were able to get that accomplished. And we were all, and the baseball diving, or baseball visitors dug up, also had some real bad heaving in the concrete, so a recent breakdown was also repaired. We got some quotes on installing the new dishwasher at the elementary, which was a lot more involved than we anticipated, requiring new wiring, new brakes. before, new wiring, new barriers put in, quite a bit of plumbing repaired. Well, we did manage to complete that also over Easter break before the kid break. We planned to schedule to come back on that Tuesday, so we didn't have, without hiring that out as well. All the buses, we got their in-house maintenance and inspections on over Easter break. It was quite a, quite a busy time, but the students in over Easter break and in the next week or so after, without them breaking things and having to repair, I mean, we'll do quite a bit of extra stuff done that normally we wouldn't have time for. Like Mr. Ropke said, the school, a lot of schools, we're ourselves with COVID issues, weather being up and down. Bus drivers have done an amazing job, and we've had cancellations, multiple cancellations every week. So, they cancel that trip and pick up another trip or try to reschedule, and have done a fantastic job. I'm sure those covering all the trips so far. And we try to do a lot of makeup games, it could be a little more difficult leaving early, having enough stops, but we're in. We're on track right now, so hopefully that continues. Got some more roofers out. Gentleman just left a message today, he wants to be giving us a quote. Did have a company come out, give us a keep on quote, Mr. Goodby's gotten that for doing some doors over here in the elementary school. Let's see what else. Oh, last Thursday, was finally able to get it up again. Was willing to come out and take a look at our heating system over at the elementary, the heating units in each of the classrooms. I have got the quote yet for this, and we'll get that before that on Mr. Goodby as well. He's giving us a quote on replacement, going to refurbish, as well as adding ionization machines to the units themselves, all of the pretty different separate quotes, so we can look at those. And ionization is to help eliminate the germs and viruses that are in the air, so that might be something that we want to look at as well, but again, not sure how much that will cost. Fortunately, our lawn maintenance person started back this week with Mark Pringle retiring from custodial. That was one of his jobs that he was doing on his lawn maintenance also, so we're down with the lawn maintenance person. So fortunately, he got back just in time to try to keep up on all the games, getting all the lawns in front of the schools and everything well, so hopefully the weather stays decent, he can keep one away.
Any questions?
Can we ask a question, Mr. President?
Absolutely.
When you had the company, I'm sorry. When the company came up to evaluate the heating in the elementary, are you willing to share what their initial thought is? Is it as dead as we think it is, or do they all need to be replaced?
Is it, is it, as we went through, we went through every classroom.
Right, Adam.
The newest one that he defined was twenty-one years old.
Okay.
Several of them were over thirty-five years old.
Okay.
And his initial thought was that it's cheaper to replace than to refurbish, but until that quote comes in, we won't know. He said it's a lot more simple to have a learning manufacturer come in, cut a few lines, slap a new one in that's exactly the same size, and go ahead and pull motors out, pull bearings out. He said it's very labor intensive, and that's where the cost really goes up.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Kujak, with the roof, are we still headed towards potential repairs and replacement at this point?
The one gentleman that I was waiting to hear back from, he, he thought he could also do some repairs, but he hasn't given, called back yet to give me his final thoughts. He spent two days here going over the entire roof, just in this early morning, so hopefully I'll hear back from him tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Kujak? All right, thank you. I believe Mr. Kirstenberger has gone, right?
Yes, yes.
I did want to point out just a couple of things before, I know everyone's probably read this, but he called out DJ Bouter for helping out in the elementary to get some rewiring done, from the car. And it looks like we got a couple of projectors from that Chippewa Valley School sale that he brought to us with the last meeting, so that's good news. Mr. Goodby, are you going to take over for Mr. Walsh?
No, he just mentioned that, you know, if you had any questions, you could call up with him, and he could give responses.
So, Board, you have in front of you or sent to you the general budget, the general fund, second amendment, the food service budget, second amendment, as well as the interim funds. He is out coaching our girls' softball team, so a good place for him to be. I encouraged him to do that this evening, hopefully everyone doesn't mind that. Anyone have any questions that Mr. Goodby can take back to him on financials? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the strategic plan update for the season.
Well, welcome, thanks for having me back again, Board. Just a kind of an update here, there's a link you have for the strategic plan update available, fairly similar to the one that Mrs. Hankins shared with you last month. There are three goals basically of the plan. You can see the communications and engagement, culture and learning, and programs. I won't go through everything there, but you can see through at least goal one, the ways in which we are attempting to communicate with parents, students, and the staff. One area that I did want to point out is our, under the staff, you see there's the second goal pointer, the identify team, identify team is a group of teachers that I will go to to ask about any concerns, or to bring new ideas or concerns to them, to bounce some, bounce some ideas off of them, get some good responses. They are a group of teachers that are well-respected, and so I trust them, but that's kind of a newer thing this year. In addition to our school improvement team, and P V S team, we also have the identify team, and they help me identify some areas that maybe I'm not seeing, or that we're not seeing. We kind of use that as another mode of communication between staff. If you look at goal, goal two is kind of very similar to what we've had here for a few years. P V S, restored practices, reflection, restored room, those kind of things. And again, we make sure we tie those goals one together, because, you know, communication and cultural, our culture and our environment, our learning environment kind of go hand in hand. If you look at goal three, the programs, I'm saying you all know what that is, what we have there, Zero and Seventh Hour Program. Summer School Program is in development, we did our teachers interested. We definitely have a good number of students that we could, that we will be inviting to summer school. And once we, once we kind of lay out the way that's going to look, we'll be able to, I'll be able to present that to you, we can move forward with it. Again, another opportunity besides Zero and Seventh Hour, Summer School is another opportunity to catch those students, meet those students that may have fallen behind, failed for their credit, in junior, junior high, and high school, a way to kind of bring them back up to speed, especially with all the things that have been happening with COVID. We want to, we want to be able to offer them something there. And then, I guess, another thing, a final, our school improvement team, one of our, one of our goals this year has been to kind of look at some of our programs and our curriculums and to review them. So, we're in that process right now, we'll be waiting to continue to review the My, My Kit, I almost said My sip, My Kit program, which is a new version of our school improvement, or Assist, which would be for our school improvement plan. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell. Again, if you have any questions about, I'm happy to ask and answer them, as related to those two goals.
Thank you, questions for Mr. Kratka?
This is Kratka, I have a question for you. Are we looking next year in the scheduling? I know with COVID and a lot of online, some of the students, for example, failing Algebra I, but there may not be an Algebra I class, it's the second semester, and they failed first semester, so we're kind of setting kids up for failure with course offerings? Are we looking at that above students that haven't got their basics down before placing them in the upper level classes?
Well, that's, that's what we hope we can do with some of these Zero and Seventh Hours, making summer schools, get them caught up with the D D B. We always offer students those classes, so for example, if we do have a student that, you know, did not pass Algebra I, we'll offer it to them the next year, and they start before we move to Algebra II. We can't really move them up that, up that way. We have been looking at flexibility, the schedule to do some of those things. I think this year more than ever, there needs to be flexibility when it comes to planning. So, Mr. Goodby has been really spending a lot of hours on that, and I think we're getting close to where we need to be, and we definitely are identifying those students. We have, we have those students identified that did not earn credit this year, or that are behind for a certain number. And we are meeting with those students, trying to figure out plans for them moving forward. Obviously, we want to be able to offer them a way to make up those credits with the least disruption to their daily schedules, so we continue to look at all those, any option we can.
Any other questions for Mr. Kratka? Thank you, Mr. Kratka. We are now, oh, okay, we are now at public comment, item seven. Just remind you of the board policy for public participation. I know it's not on the form and on the agenda as well. Still, we got one person to go ahead.
Yes, David Daniel Bergen.
So, hello, I think, is it Anna, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, my name is Daniel Bergen, and I have a senior here, and first of all, I do want to say throughout the year, there's been good communication, for the most part, everybody's got that when I've sent things out. So, I want to first start with the, you know, the positives. But as you guys are all aware, that so much has been taken from seniors, especially last year, from sports in the, in the spring season. This year, you know, it's changed, the whole look has changed. You know, my husband and I both graduated back quite a long time ago from Memphis, and our biggest dream, you know, for our kids was for them to have kind of what we had, the memories that we had. And it's not like, it's not anybody's fault, per se, but I would like to see as much normalcy as possible that the board is allowed to have, and things have been shut down, whether it's prom this year recently, to some of the sports, I think, but my concern right now is graduation. And I know that they've been working diligently, Mr. Kratka, whenever I send an email, the interns an email, a phone call, hands down, I've reached out a handful of times, and I always get response back. But the reason I chose to speak tonight was because I don't know if there's going to be a board meeting before graduation, and I know that the committee has got together and talked about a lot of things as far as graduation goes, and I realize that I don't necessarily agree with everything, but the one thing I want to put out there before a decision is put out publicly, is the amount of people that we can have come to graduation. I, first of all, I'm grateful if we could just, if we, that we're having it. But secondly, if we're going to have it outside, I want the numbers to be looked at as far as, from the standpoint of, my daughter's running track, and I go to track meets at all these different schools, and there's like eight track teams plus full stands. So, we have seventy, what I've been told is seventy-seven students. I don't know if they're all going to be at graduation or not. And when the decision is made on the numbers, I'd like to possibly have it pushed out from the standpoint of what's allowed for a lot of other things, because my daughter graduating is, it means a lot to me from a lot of standpoints. She was given thirty percent chance to live, and there's other people that want to be there other than myself and my husband. I'd love for her two brothers to be able to be there. I would love for her grandparents that are allowed to be here. And so, I just want it to be considered of what is possible to have a graduation before it's publicly put out there, the best that we can possibly do for these kids, because they have lost so much. And I'm just thankful that we haven't lost any of our students with, you know, just the things that have gone on. And other schools are losing kids left and right, and I'm not talking not graduating, I'm talking not being here. So, I've been trying to be for, for the kids, a cheerleader, like, you know, let's make the best of what we have. But we do have an opportunity to allow them to have, you know, maybe their entire family or their, their grandparents, and I just want it to be considered before the decision is put out there publicly. So, that's, you know, I, there's been lots of disappointments, prom has disappointments, there's lots of disappointments, but we still have a chance to have graduation, and I just want it to be very much considered, everybody kind of look at it and see what we can, we can do before it's, it's, before it's just two people. Because once you say it, it's hard to suck it back in, so if, that's what I'm asking you, is the best that we can possibly do. And if we need volunteers to do something, I'm sure there's, even the parents of the senior class can find other parents that are willing to help, if it's take temperatures, whatever it is, I'm sure we can work together to make this the best, very well send out for these kids. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt and I talked about this, basically, we want to make sure that we're within the guidelines of the Health Department, Michigan Department of Health and Services, and we will make sure that we have the max that we can have in that stadium, so we'll keep the most on that, thank you.
And it is, the current guidelines are much more liberal than what they were at this time last year, so. Okay, we have course comments on our true law notes, kind of timely, considering our true law notes actually does address a few other subjects. I'm sure everyone's had a chance to read through the true notes, and it has been very nice to get those on a regular basis instead of waiting for the meetings, so that's, it's helped in reading, because sometimes they get a bit long, you're twelve pages from March twenty-fifth. Any thoughts on the true school law notes from the board? I just have a couple, I just have a couple of things. One is the, the First Amendment smell test was interesting, but then there are certainly some Michigan-specific gathering rules and things about prom as well, so. Good reading, and it's nice to have them provide us with really the latest and greatest, this was just published yesterday. Anything else on the true law notes? All right, we will move on to the whole business, and as usual, we will consider the reconfirmation of our extended continuity of learning plan for the full. Goodby?
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Ah, yes, again, reviewing the data from the last month and then making sure that we're doing the right thing for all of our students. As you're aware, the single county numbers have been very high, we're at a thirty percent positive rate. As of Friday, we're down to twenty-three point nine in the county, so it is going down steadily, which is nice to see. We've got notifications today too, that the hospitals are really better at maintaining and being able to help out the little need. The attendance rate continued to be very good, obviously, four weeks ago, the first week of this month was our spring break, we didn't have attendance, but week two was ninety-four percent, week three ninety-three, and week four ninety-four percent. So, our students are continuing to attend, whether we're virtual or face-to-face. Our staff is doing a great job providing for those students. We did make the right decision to be closed for those couple of weeks with the numbers we saw just on campus. The weekly testing has been The weekly testing has been very beneficial, having that sample of students that we can kind of get an idea of what we're seeing in the high school. So with that information and with the trend of the county going down, I recommend that we continue to do as we have, provide online services for those that are requesting and face to face instruction for all of us.
We'd look for a motion.
Mr. Cook, I make a motion and we continue with the ECOL guidelines that have been set forth so far.
Motion by Mrs. Thompson, supportive by Mr. Baxi to reconfirm for May the extended continuity of learning plan as presented. Any further discussion? Not voting affirmative by saying aye? Aye. The negative by nay. Motion carried. All right, we are going to move on to our new policy updates. We have three, actually four, five adoptions today. And we'll start with the fall updates 2020. Yeah, I think the, I think we could actually do the four together. And we can entertain a motion for the first four, a through k.
I make a motion to adapt the first four updates, fall update 2020, spring update 2021, and the winter updates 2021, and the non-discrimination anti-grassman policy update, February 2021. So four.
All right, motion by Mrs. Thompson, supportive by Ms. McQ to adopt the fall 2020, spring 2021, February 2021, and February 2021 non-discrimination anti-grassman policies as presented. Any discussions or questions? Not signify by, by saying aye? Aye. Or opposed nay. Motion carried. Moving on to policy 9130, public complaints. This is the edit of the policy 9130 that the Policy Committee presented to us at the last board meeting. So we'll look for a motion here as well.
Mr. Cook, I make a motion to adopt policy 9130, public complaints as presented.
Support.
Motion by Mrs. Thompson, I heard Mr. Baxi first, in support of the adoption of policy 9130, public complaints as presented. Any questions from the board? Discussion? Not signify by affirmative by saying aye? Aye. And opposed nay. Motion carried. On to new business, the MEA calendar for 21, 2021 and 2022.
Motion to accept the calendar as presented for 2021 through 2022.
I'll begin.
Is it you, Mrs. President?
It was Mr. Drew.
Oh, it was Mr. Drew, sorry, couldn't hear him from over there. We're going to move the tables next thing. So support by Mrs. Thursday, or motion by Mrs. Thursday, supportive by Mrs. Drew to approve the MEA calendar 2021 through 2022 as presented. Any discussion? Could be any kind of that?
I hope it's very similar to Mrs. Thompson's calendar. We are starting pre-later date, Monday, the 30th, August, to be our first day of school. We'll be doing a half day like we did this past year, worked out very well. Same standard breaks for Christmas and spring break. Easter is separated this year, so a little bit different. We'll have that separate break, which is kind of nice sometimes too. But we'll get out the second week of June as we always have, so.
All right, we have a motion of second. All in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed by nay. Motion carried. Moving on to the ESS substitute agreement for 2021 through 2022.
Make a motion to approve the contract agreement. Addendum to the study contract agreement.
Support. Motion by Mrs. Thompson, supportive by Mr. Cook to approve the ESS substitute agreement addendum as presented for 2021 through 2022. Any questions or discussion?
I do have some questions. What is this specifically regarding to? Is this teachers? What is this, this contract?
Yes, they're substitutes.
Okay. What is the usage of agency?
Daily, there's four to five substitutes depending on the day. So this would cover, they cover all our substitute, substitute teachers for the district.
Okay, and has there been any discussion with the union in regards to maybe creating an in-house agency or something that we would work with down?
We have not. We did that 15 years ago, but we have not reconsidered.
Last question, if we don't approve tonight, tonight, the deadline should be early first, which is Saturday, correct? Do you give them 90 days?
Yes, that would be correct.
A little tight, okay.
Any other questions in discussion? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. And opposed nay. Motion carried. On to new business, safety of buildings, security cameras and procedures. I think there's a motion here, but a discussion, so go ahead.
I'm sorry, do we need a motion to discuss, Bernie?
In this case, I think this was just put on as something that was wanted to be discussed. Discuss, so it's an open discussion on this topic.
Yes, I just had some concerns I wanted to discuss with the board and see, make sure we were all on the same page and maybe get everyone else's thoughts on this as well. So a while back, it was all, it was presented to us that there was a situation in the elementary building. And I do understand that situation has been taken care of. Some of the questions that I have though are, I don't know which to direct them to. Maybe it's Mr. Kujin or, Brett, okay, sorry. Do we have a camera? Are there cameras projected at every exterior door in that building?
No, there's not. I had Mr. Bruce go through and do a kind of a comment on our cameras, our doors and our situations. Basically, in this, in this building, we have 57 cameras, eight outdoor, 48 indoor, so that'd be 56. There is 20 exterior doors and 13 of them are clearly visible by one or more cameras, seven are not. At the elementary school, there are 51 cameras, 29 exterior doors, eight are clearly visible, and 21 are not.
Okay. And I see in some of the board reports that there is now a checkoff sheet, I guess if you will, where someone is checking these exterior doors, if I read correctly, morning and evening, to make sure that they're locked or operating properly.
Both.
Okay.
Now we've, we've been coming down on our staff and asking them to make sure during the day, it's also support that. It wasn't practiced before, but obviously they weren't checking what we said at the elementary, all 29. Some doors that were missed, so now it's practice that they can check every exterior door, I don't think.
Yes, and I think that's, I think that's a great start. I do, I do want to find out what the, what was actually wrong with the door in question? And how was it repaired or was it completely replaced?
When we looked into the door, there was not an issue with it. So it was shut at that time. Again, I don't know if there was something else that day, either snow, ice buildup on the bottom. And to that, but the doors were just operational.
Completely operational, okay, okay. All right, is there anything that we can do to possibly maybe move some cameras around so we can have them more focused on the exterior doors? I understand the elementary has quite a few more, but maybe on the main doors? Or the larger areas of concern where there would be a larger number of students all at one time?
Yes, Mr. Bruce has had that this week. He's got plans to install three more cameras, which will cover one, two, I think six, at least six additional cameras. I'm looking around for them, I know it's not here. Six additional doors, just with those would be the elementary gym, the exterior maintenance entrance over there, and playground for GSR Peds.
Okay, perfect. And my last question would be, can we get, is there a list anywhere of how many cameras we have and what, what they are projected at directly?
I can get you a map of that.
Perfect, thank you.
I have one question, who monitors these cameras?
I was just going to ask, say, Mr. Thursday, to branch off that, who's going to have access to these, the footage of these videos? I think we need to have a certain assignment so we know that it's not any teacher, any administrator. It needs to be specific, I feel, on who's got access to these recordings. Suggestion, but not Mr. Thursday.
We do have that, it's building administrators, myself and Mr. Bruce. If you do want to monitor, they may make sure that they're active in recording.
So to clarify, would any teacher, any employee, any other administrator have access to those recordings without going to you, Mr. Bruce, or first?
Administrators, building administrators have that access. If there's an issue in the building, they have to go to the, to check the cameras for student incidents, something along those lines.
And will we or could we possibly have a sign on when they are being reviewed after hours or not live? I would like to see something in writing of who's accessed that video, went back to replay something, the date and time, so we know when those recordings are being reviewed and why they're being reviewed.
I will have to check with the SUVs if there's a way that that's monitored as soon as it's recorded.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on the topic?
Just a quick about that, I guess, I get where you're going with that, but who's monitoring, is the monitoring, like, what is the point of it?
Well, sorry, well, that's my point, you know, it's a referral, this is time. We don't know who is accessing, who's not accessing. There needs to be, I think, one access point to review these tapes. If it's one room in particular where you can have access, even if that room has the key bop on it, we know who's coming in and out of that room and what time, and possibly that individual's the one looking at that surveillance camera, listening to any recordings. I think we need to have a solid procedure in place for this, for our students' protection and even employee protection.
Mr. Gibby, are the cameras still passcode protected? So when you or the principals have to go onto these, it's not something you can just bring up? It's a passcode protected that the four of you would have to have a passcode before you could look at them?
That's correct.
And that they're just running on a period of time and then after 30 days, they are gone?
All cameras are continuous recording until the space on the server is off. So Brian, I think, last and checks, I know some cameras are getting six days. It's recorded that we have 30 days with the footage, I don't have enough storage for that. But currently, depending on the usage in what area, that most of our last longer than that, but.
And they're only motion detected still?
Motion, yes, so they'll say about motion.
So they start if there's motion in the building or in the space?
That's correct.
So these cameras are really active effect? It's not, it's not current time, real time, I see someone coming in the building unless you happen to be there.
We do have, we have TVs in both main offices that are projecting several different cameras for entrances. So they are live. So they, they are real time that secretaries or the personnel in the office can see cameras as people approach or enter the building.
And just to bounce off what, Ms. Thompson, I completely understand where you're coming from. It's just, you know, in the past, it's been concerned of who's accessed recordings, some things in question. I just think we have to have a more secure process for this so we know who and when and why these past recordings were accessed, if they were accessed. Like I said, again, to protect our students, to protect our parents, to protect our staff. I just think it's something very important that we need to look into and see how we can do this in a safe manner.
Are you wanting like building administrators to get permission to access cameras every time they go on because?
No, I'm saying when they want to go back to review something. If there's something in question that needs to be reviewed, I would like there to be something, some procedure in place that we know why they are going back and who's going back to review a certain situation that may have occurred. May it be a fight that was on camera in the hallway, may it be an argument, whatever the situation is. If someone, administration, any staff, whoever it may be, is going back to review that video to, to clarify maybe what happened in that situation. I feel we have to protect our staff, our students, our families, and make sure we know who is accessing those pre-recorded, past-reported situations so there's no one in question, if there's anything of wrongdoing in question, let's say.
I know what you're saying, but then you say that there's a law and say, you know, Mr. Cook went and checked the cameras, there was a fight, he had a variable that's happening. He documented that he checked the cameras and stuff. When he comes out to, then what, the director's going to have to check the law to make sure that's legit? How would you know, like, really, and realistically?
No, I don't want to know that that's why he was going to take, you know, I mean, realistically. But right now, we have nothing in place. Right now, we have nothing in place. It's, you go in, you watch, there's nothing in place, you can see who's even went back to look at those videos. As far as I'm aware, I have been updated or updated that there's been anything put in place to say that there's anything showing who's reached out or in review of these previous tapes. We have to have something, even if it is just a basic log, then we have some record of who and why. I mean, right now, we have nothing.
May I interject?
Yes.
I think by creating a log for our administrators to answer as to why they're checking on the safety and security of the students, the personnel in the building, when they deem it's necessary, I think it would be a great misuse of time for them. We don't have to go from nothing to something so micromanaged like that. This is, this is just a simple, you know, we just need to have a simple process in place where we're making sure that the cameras are working, we're making sure that the cameras are projected in the appropriate, appropriate areas of the buildings. And I don't think that asking our administrators to log every time they want to look at a tape is the best use of their time.
I'm not asking for it to be done on a regular basis. I'm saying with exception regarding a certain circumstance. I'm not asking for every time, I mean, I guess you're misunderstanding like what I'm trying to get at here.
Yes.
Like how do we even have some accountability in ownership here for why these tapes are going back and being reviewed? There has been issues in the past and issues we never resolved. And there was a lot of he said, she said. And to prevent this from happening again in the future, if we are now having just, you know, access to these, these previous recorded videos and we don't know who and why they're going back to be reviewed five different times, I feel that a simple writing down, I access such Tuesday at 8:00 in regards to... I feel that a simple writing down, I accessed it such Tuesday at nine o'clock in regards to this matter, that's not much to ask for, if it's something that's in question, I'm not asking if it's something on a regular basis, if it's something in question, if there's a concern from a parent, a concern from administrator, a concern from a staff member, then it's a log at that point in time when it's a concern and a possibly misleading a misleading sort of looking for situation, and unfortunately, it's been misused in the past.
Mrs. Director, just a quick point of information, so we actually do have, I know there's a lot of new policy, but seventy-four forty point oh one. Under property, under the seven thousand block of new policies, does have a current video surveillance and electronic monitoring policy. There are some very specific pieces in here. I would say that the next time the policy committee meets, if they'd like to just take a look at this and make sure that it's comprehensive, I'm not gonna take the time to read the whole thing right now, it's about a page long. But it's seventy-four, seventy-four forty point zero one.
I'll provide the board with administrative guidelines for the next meeting through as possible.
Perfect.
Thank you for that, Mr. Cook, I appreciate it.
Just one.
It's right above small unmanned aircraft systems. We have a policy for that. Fair enough, anything else on safety of building, security cameras and procedures?
I'm all set, thank you.
Awesome.
I am, thank you.
Thank you, would be a great use perhaps of some sinking fund dollars, if we have some money to upgrade our video surveillance, videos are always a great tool for preventing things.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm sorry, do we have an idea of like costs and stuff like that to kind of update? I mean, all of our main areas, it sounds like the cameras are ready. But I don't know if you guys ever did a rundown number of what it costs to update all the doors or anything like that? Of where we add or how much or anything like that, so is that an idea?
Yes, about two hundred, three hundred dollars per camera to add. Our servers do have the space for them, so that did something Brian has already planned for the summer. To go every door, I think would be a little excessive. You know, some of the doors that would come, for the elementary store, two exterior doors into the girls' locker room. If we add one camera in the gym, anybody that gets in those doors, we're gonna see them in the gym. So you're not gonna have a cam monitor, but it's gonna cover those, I think that one camera covers seven doors. If somebody came in, we would be able to see them in the gym before they entered the building. And that's the main goal for us, is make sure that we can see if somebody gets into a building. You know, we might not see which door exactly, but before they enter the building, whether it's any students, they would be on camera.
Okay, thank you.
All right, completes our new business, we'll move on to item eleven, hearings. Through with the paperwork together. So I know that the Board of Education hearing procedure has been shared with complaints and respondents. Of complaints, we'll be hearing complaint twenty twenty dash twenty-one dash one first. Just to go through the procedure once again, the respondent has the choice of having an open or closed session. If the session is closed, go through those rules at such time. We will, I would ask for confirmation that all documentation that has been sent to the Board of Education has been shared with all parties before we start. Our job this evening is exploration and conclusion according to the board's decision, and to answer any questions prior to exploring the issues. I'll ask the complaints and respondents if they have any questions before we commence. The complaint for any hearing will be given the opportunity to address their complaint. I would ask that they summarize their complaint. We have well over two hundred pages of documents that this board has read over the last couple of months, in a couple of days. After that summary, the respondent will have an opportunity to respond. Again, I would ask for a summary of their response. And then the board will be given an opportunity to ask questions to the complainant and or respondent, or anyone else involved, to gain further understanding of the subject of the complaint, response, and administrative actions taking place prior to the hearing. As I noted in an email that was shared to the board, we will be discussing the complaint in the complaint alone. Once we have asked the questions, the board has completed their questions, we will deliver it amongst ourselves. And by that, I mean an open session, if it's an open session. And we have three potential potential conclusions here. Number one would be take no further action. Number two would be direct, pretend to re-look at case and perform additional investigation and conclusion, or take action according to the Board of Education's conclusions. There is a fourth possibility, you could, we could table a complaint for further discussion. Obviously, if we have a closed session, no motion can be made or considered until a closed session is ended. And the decision of the Board of Education will be recorded in the meeting minutes by the Board of Education Secretary. A written summary of that decision will be provided by request of the complaint man or the respondent. Okay, with that in mind, we have a complaint man and a respondent for twenty twenty-one, twenty, twenty, twenty-one, one in the rooms. Sorry, roads got a pass seven? Okay. Okay, we'll start off, does the respondent wish to have an open or closed session?
Open session.
Open session, okay. All right, the complaint, they proceed with their summary, please.
Mr. Superintendent, thank you for your presentation. My name is Brandon McNeely, and I represent Merritt.
Sorry, sorry.
My name is Brandon McNeely, and I represent Josh and Merritt, both.
Yes, you can take your next round.
Uh, I just wanna start by thanking you. I was, my first boss was my uncle, he was a volunteer, like, East China Board of Education. I shared an office with him for twelve years, so I know, I know what the Jack tells, he shared an office with me. You know, as I walked into this room, this is, this is different. I mean, when I walk into a courtroom, I'm expecting, you know, I, we know it's gonna be contentious. Divorce is criminal proceedings, and I walked in this cafeteria, and it's awkward. You know, this isn't a place where it's contentious and things are supposed to be like this. And it's really unfortunate that it's gone this far, and we've asked this to go all the way to the end stage. It's really disappointing, and like I said, it's awkward, and I said, I was sitting here. But I wanna try to provide some respect about how we got here. And to do that, I'm gonna ask you to just place yourself in the situation that my clients found themselves, okay? Merritt is a school teacher here. And imagine if you were working somewhere, and a coworker filed a complaint with the governing board, and in that complaint alleged that there were seven inaccurate things, seven false things in that complaint. If anything, it just creates work, you gotta respond to it. I mean, at the, at the, at the, at the most basic level, just responding to it is an inconvenience and tiresome and problematic. But then there's the amount, as I, as I educated, and I really do appreciate, you know, we submitted two lengthy letters that kind of detail why we feel, you know, the number of things that were inaccurate. And then there's the consequence, in and of having responded is, if you don't win, your son isn't gonna be able to play sports for a whole year. You know, and I, you know, as my perspective on this, I have three and a five-year-old, I just went to my, my five-year-old's first T-ball practice. And he'd been talking about it for weeks. I, I don't know what the perspective is for a fifteen-year-old, 'cause I'm not there yet in my parenthood, but I gotta imagine that someone that age, you know, that's a big deal, to, to not be able to play sports for a year. All schools, everything, you know, your whole social life's done. So I think, you know, the demanding that the complaint be accurate, I, I don't think that's too much. I, I don't think it's willy-nilly stuff that's thrown in, I think there's a degree of professionalism here as to the accuracy, accuracy of the stuff that needs to go in. It's not a quote-unlaw, this isn't a criminal proceeding, but there's, there's a level of accuracy, I think, that needs to be achieved. And if it's not achieved, then, then there should be some sort of discipline. And why should you care? Why should you care? Well, I kinda just outlined why you should, why you should care, but also because I think the numbers problem it. You know, I've went through, I, I just picked out seven ones where I don't think they can dispute them at all. You know, just, just facts that are just not true. But the number, the number of inaccurate things shows a lack of diligence, professionalism. But then what concerns me, you know, and I, and I walked in the room, I said, why wasn't this thing just retracted? Why wasn't the record just corrected? You know, we, we didn't have to get all the way here. Because my clients filed, they thought, it, it was well done, and it explained how this stuff was inaccurate. And right before they reached the decision, the MHSAA reached out to the athletic director, Mr. Oki, and asked him, is there anything that you wanna do, is there anything that you wanna supplement? You know, no. And then there's, there is the problem, the record isn't corrected. And make no mistake about it, the MHSAA rules on this. They reach a decision based on inaccurate record. Now, if they got it from my clients, they reached a decision, they said there wasn't enough to rule that this was an athletically motivated transfer. But the fact that they ruled on it is problematic, because it wasn't retracted. They, they based the ruling based on the record that was submitted in the report. And that is a problem. The fact that the athletic director, Mr. Oki, somewhat raises the white flag, says that I am good conscious, can't move. You know, if they, if they're gonna move, I don't wanna deny, that's that's problematic, because it doesn't, it's, the ruling still goes forward. It should have been retracted. And all along, there was this argument, you've seen in there, you know, and, and it was, it was painstaking, listen to it, three and a half hours of arguments. But all along, consistently, you know, what was this, what was this complaint actually about? You know, changes from, is it about a move? Are we just doing this because they haven't moved yet? That was, that was an argument that was made several times. Are we doing this because Armada is doing something wrong? You know, what is the point of this? And the move argument just doesn't make sense, because on August twelfth, my client's requested physical. They requested physical. And within five hours, an email's been shot off to the athletic director at Armada, saying that we're not gonna, we're gonna challenge this athletically motivated. And the athletic director immediately responds, you know, a day later, and says that they, they, they got a purchase agreement on a house. So he knows they're gonna move, he knows that they're gonna move, but yet, he waits, and five days later files his complaint. So he knew prior to filing this that there was gonna be a move. You know, and the superintendent even asked Mr. Oki, why after you found out, why after you found out they're moving, why did he not retract this? And he said, well, the purchase, the mortgage could fall apart, or the athletic director for Armada couldn't lie. You know, I just, I think that is a problematic answer. You know, because at that point, it should have been retracted. And at that point, Armada has already said, we're not gonna let him play. We're not gonna let him play until the rule is completed, there just simply isn't reason to keep going with this, but if, if the plot's not. And in correspondence to the board, Mr. Oki wants the board to take him at his own work. That takes you back to the whys. Why does Mr. Oki change his resume for final complaint? Why is this a movie target? Why is it about the move? Why is it about Armada? Why is it about athletically motivated transfers? Why do the statements change between the first medium and second medium? Why is he reprimanded by the superintendent? Make no mistake, that was provided me by their attorney, they sent me to reprimand, we didn't know that until four days ago, that he actually was reprimanded for not completing an accurate assessment before submitting this to the governing body, the administration. And why does this lawyer make false representations about us doing something illegal?
Sir, point of order, what's your name, sir?
Brandon.
Brandon?
Yes.
Um, you're asking, sir?
McNeely.
McNeely.
McNeely, I thought I could use myself.
I couldn't hear you through the mask, Brandon.
Yeah, okay, Brandon McNeely, you know, it's M C. M C, N, A, M, E.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon. Point of order, sir, you are, I'm giving you some latitude here, but the summary is about the complaint, and you're going off the complaint into other things that are not part of the complaint. And so I'd ask you to remain to the complaint dated ten three twenty twenty, because that is what was explained in the proceedings, thank you.
Certainly, I apologize. So first, the first inaccurate thing was Camion did not move, this is the complaint, so he can be coached by his dad. You know, and when we're talking about an athletically motivated transfer, the relationship, the specific relationship between the parties is really important. The details are important, because when MHSAA sent us correspondence to the superintendent, to the athletic director, it said, this is what Memphis's burden of proof is. The burden of proof will be for the administration of the accusing school to demonstrate to the MHSAA executive director that the transfer has more to do with athletics than with auto-compelling factors, such as an athletic motivated transfer. So the details matter, the relationships matter. Whether it's AAU or recreational batter, recreational basketball at Joe Dumars, all of this matters. The specific relationships between the people matter. So when he says, when you, when you file a complaint and you say, this kid's gonna move school, move to Armada because he can be coached by his dad, it's a pretty serious allegation, I mean, that's almost, that's a red flag right there. They're moving schools, so that you can be coached in two sports by your father. That in itself almost would rule you out, but you can't, you can't be at Memphis and then go to Armada and be coached by your father, who's a teacher coaching at Armada. So that has to be true, if you're gonna put it in there, and it wasn't. And, and they tried to defend themselves by saying, he assisted, he assisted in the pact, no. What the complaint says is that both fathers are transferring their sons to Armada to where Camion can be, can be coached by his dad. So that's, that represents going to be coached, he's gonna be coached, and that just simply is not true. And we've gone through that, he's not an Armada coach, he doesn't coach any sports at Armada, so that just simply was information that was untrue. The next item, Camion, number two, Camion was not recruited by an Armada basketball coach. Again, the relationship is important. Nick Karowski is not an Armada basketball coach. He has coached basketball in the city of Armada for a separate enrichment program that is not associated with Armada schools. And both the superintendent and the principal for Armada said he's not associated with the school. So when you raise recruitment, that's like another So when you raise recruitment, that's like another big flag. I mean, that, you, you can go athletically motivated transfer, and then when you allege recruitment, that's another whole set of rules and another whole problematic situation. So it does matter when you say he's an Armada basketball coach, and he's not. And again, it was inaccurate, he's not associated with Armada, and you have two people from Armada saying he's not a coach. No proof whatsoever on three, that Josh Coon wanted to be a Memphis high school basketball coach. That was all conjecture and statements from other people. But the problematic thing on that one, and I'll be brief on this one, was that in his most recent correspondence, he says, Mr. Coon verbally expressed his desire to coach high school basketball to the athletic director. That's not true. And his, and his own statement in accordance with Mr. Oki said, he only got that information from the sneeze, from Chris Sneeze. So that, that is, that is inaccurate. Now, four, he's never coached cross-country at Armada, he's never coached cross-country in 20 years. Again, that's just information that you can readily fact-check. You could, you could call up the Armada athletic director and see that he's not a cross-country coach. And they tried to defend this by saying, well, he's chaperone at a race in the past. But again, when you're talking about the burden of proof, whether determining if athletics raised academics and the interplay, and, and there is, this is, there's no black and white, there's gray here. And that's why when you say he's a coach, rather than tell him what the fact is that he's chaperone at a race, there's a big difference there. And again, it was never corrected. If he's a chaperone, just, just submit a retract, you say he's not a coach, he's a chaperone, or at least, for the sake of the record, explain the difference, if you know... And the other thing too here is, the fifth one, the kid's never, Camden never played AAU. He, you know, and, and they say it doesn't matter, any organized basketball counts as AAU. That's not true. AAU is a specific organization, they have trials, it's a much higher level of basketball. And again, is it relevant whether Camden played organized basketball? Yes. But his level of involvement in organized basketball and with people is also relevant. So when you say he played AAU and he didn't, that's problematic. But even more than that, whether or not you wanna agree on AAU, the point is that Mr. Coon never coached AAU, and that was admitted to. So that's the fifth one. I don't even put AAU in organization, that's not even one of my five. My point is, we can easily prove that he never coached AAU. And six, they put in there, that Camden did not move, so he could play basketball with Anthony Sneeze.
Point of order, sir. It was well documented in the documents sent out to both complaints and the respondents, the student's names were not to be used, I've given you the latitude on the complaint student, since the parents are in the room, but I'd ask you not to use any of the students' names. Thank you.
The seventh one was, they didn't play, they let the other student, they never played basketball together. One student played JV, and one student played varsity. So they never actually played together when they... So, back to, why is this important? Now, why do... Why wasn't the record corrected? And I just think it's problematic when you have a situation where you have a coworker that has to respond to something like this, and it goes through, they see it to the end, and they make a ruling, and there's so many things that were not right, so many things that were inaccurate. Because I don't believe that this was ever about a beef between a child playing sports at the JV level. You know, and they compared it to the Thomas Quigby situation or argument, and it just wasn't. This was about a beef between an Armada athletic director and Memphis that had nothing to do with a 15-year-old JV basketball player. And we think, you know, in light of how is this responded, you know, he, in his first meeting, stated that there was no chain command. Now, it's on record, he says, there, there is no chain command, I can do, I can do what I want. And then in the second meeting, on tape, he says he never said that. He says there absolutely is a chain command. And then to follow it up, you know, in my point, we'd like a chance to respond yourself to the harassment complaint. Rather than correct the record, rather than correct the record, he files a harassment complaint, Mr. Oki, is that if he's willing to retract, we pause hours. We're not willing to pause hours. And I think, you know, we'll, we'll deal with the harassment complaint next, but that's problematic. When you have a head of an athletic director, a head of an department submitting something that's just inaccurate, not being truthful with his direct superior, on record, I think further discipline, further reprimand, whatever's appropriate, your decision, whatever you think appropriate, we just felt that we needed to bring it to the attention of the thank you, but I'm sorry I carried on a little bit. But we would like a chance to respond to the harassment complaint at the appropriate time, and we'd like that one to be open too.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mac.
Mr. President, I have a question for the way that I'm in, for Oki's role.
Yes, we'll, yes, ma'am, we'll, we'll wait until Mr. Oki, which is, Mr. Oki just reminded about, not using any of the student's names, please. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir. Well, first, I'd like to say, I am Drake Oki, and I represent Drake Oki myself. I, just to maybe answer a couple of those, I have gone through this as a parent, I shared, I shared that with Mr. and Mrs. Coon. And I was a, was a parent, I had my son moved, we moved schools, and we were having to follow the same bylaws, by MSU saying, my son was not able to play until we had a full residential move. Now, I know what it feels like to have to go through that, my situation's real different, but I did go through that. So, yeah, so I fully understand from both ends of it, as an administrator, playing almost 20 years to, to as a parent as well.
Mr. Do you want to take your mask off?
Yes, please, thank you.
You're welcome.
I wanted to start off with, I'm not really gonna try to combat, I'm gonna explain the scenario that took place. What I did receive this on, on, this, on the 12th of August, I would tell you that it was the first week of practice and stuff like that, so the fact that their attorney was very clear to say that I sent it off in five hours, I complimented him for that, because I did, in spite of hiring your football staff, interviewing coaches that day, because we were a predicament, having our first practices, having to do COVID checks, which was, you know, the first time for all of us. So I, it was a, you know, it was a very long day, frustrating day. But in regards to, you know, trying to hit sports going and stuff like that, that I still took the time off to immediately, immediately send the reports off to, to Armada. I'm just gonna take you through a few chain events. You know, I met when this all took place, I sent off an initial email, and I sent off the initial email to the Armada's athletic director with the, with the physical cards. And, you know, there were several concerns, right from the beginning. One, there are several telling factors which why, you know, I did that. One, the residential. And it's a direct conflict with the bylaws that you have to pretty much move at the time of enrollment. Not five, six weeks, not two months later. It says in the bylaws on page general, I mean, on page 41, that it should be a full move at the time of enrollment at the new school. Number two, because I, I had five factors that I looked at. Two, athletic motivated transfer, which is on page 44, number three, you know, the very, very telling part of it was that we did have an issue here just four years ago, or five years ago, where an athlete transferred from Memphis to Armada. And at that time, there was no, that student athlete never moved. That student athlete, that student never moved. Yeah, that athlete was allowed to play, you know, per Armada, even though they were Memphis student athlete. So that was kind of a concern, you know, is Armada gonna, you know, satisfy the requirements that it takes? And, I mean, it's actually kind of ironic, but one of the things that they must do in Armada, or any school, is we had a thing here since the 2020, 2021 MC transfer for dummies and directors. And if you read it, I mean, it says very clearly, athletic motivated residential changes must be fully and complete at the time of enrollment, period. Three, the third thing I looked at, oh, that, that form was never filled out. That form was never sent to us by Armada back in fall of 2016, when they played people illegally. It was not filled out this time as well, sent to our principal, which is supposed to happen per the bylaws, never happened. I threw about a month's time and quire about having to take it all the way to the superintendent of Armada, refused to do it. This is my job. One of the things that when I was interviewed and taking this job was, we had an enormous amount of student athletes and students that are leaving Memphis. These are the first ones that left during my reign as athletic director, very proud of that. We did have four that left this, over this overtime. The two that we're talking about, and then obviously, the one that we're talking about right here, the two that went to Armada, which also had siblings that transferred, that's a thing that play together. We also had a freshman, JV volleyball, JV baseball, and varsity basketball, because we didn't have JV, who transferred that. And when I contacted those pairs, they immediately returned my phone call, I spoke with TD, we actually spoke with the student, our head coach spoke with the student, we had another student athlete that transferred to another school. And I contacted them. That day, Emir, Emir, the parent talked to me, the other parent talked to me, the student athlete talked to me, and the athletic director. When I called the state on this particular family, the state said, I talked to their AAU, AAU seven weeks ago, and said, and recommended hi to AAU to hold you. And some of the information that I sent to you, you can read that the Armada AD said, I think it's worth a look back. Didn't see the need. While you played people illegally five years ago. It is a concern, this is my job. Very disturbing, very concerning. The undue influence that Mr. and Mrs. Coon's attorney brought up, I have sent you pictures. I did say that he is previously coached, asked coach there. Mr. Coon did coach here at Memphis. I should be very clear that I didn't need to go any further. I could've submitted my report to them and say, and said, Mr. Coon coached here, I have our direct administration who sent over inquiries to be the, for the finger fits, all the information. He coached here. I have pictures, we have proof, we have a board proof, pretending that he was, as a volunteer assistant here, as an assistant coach. With that being said, Mr. Coon was present on several occasions, this isn't a one-time conversation, but the one-time conversation that we, the initial conversation, took place in Memphis High School gym, there were witnesses there, you know, it was very clearly said, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Coon, he has coached AAU with me, has sometimes played AAU with my son, I'd like him to be a part of our eighth grade program, I wanted to coach here. There were four other, there was one, sorry, myself, one, two, three other individuals here, the one unfortunately is no longer part of, of Memphis, but two were, they witnessed to that. Now, the following, that summer, that was in October of 2018, so it was very clearly stated, they coached together, they played together. To go further, as recently as that, they had a lot of them a few months ago, so one student admitted that he played, to use those terms, AAU, organized basketball with the other party, admitted it, another witness to that. Mine, I, my, me and myself watched him play at an AAU facility, and I shared with you it was an AAU facility, an AAU facility that I saw not only those two athletes play, plus our third athlete, that is, you know, still a member of our Memphis basketball team, played with them, I watched them, I coached there as an AAU coach years ago, boys and girls. Organized basketball, as I said, they also played together, so to say they weren't teammates the year before they left, they were teammates on the junior high program. That is a fact. Coach my old parents. I did not need to go to the AAU organized basketball portion. I did because it was true. Even that summer, I invited a student athlete to play in our summer league basketball program for Memphis. At one of the games at Angel Bay, my assistant coach walked up and said, look at this, I just got a, just got a message from Mrs. Coon saying, please don't play our son too much today, just play three games of AAU with the other party. I didn't, I just did, I just asked him to be there, honestly, because I see him as a talent, he's a good kid, and I liked his basketball game. And I asked him, hey, you wanna come and be a part of our, our summer program? I immediately got up and went up to Mr. Coon and said, Mr. Coon, who was sitting in the stands, he said, Mr. Coon, we just got this message from your wife saying not to play your son too much today, because he's tired because he played three games of AAU with, with the other party. If you don't want him here, take him home. No, 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 he's good, play, which we did, he did play some time. And, and yes, at that time, he was not, you know, he was a freshman, but he was a talent, he was a good kid, and we were willing to look at him. There is another part, part five that I looked at, it's called a dissatisfied parent, page 43. I figured, I actually looked at number two, these are, I've had several previous emails from Mrs. Coon, starting out in pleasantries that turned negative. I don't, I didn't even know who she was. And it got back to me in a very short period of time by several people, that she blindly copied the board and asking me a question, so, I mean, and then there was heated discussions from her towards me about our practice times, or this, they don't do this at this school, they didn't do that school. So I wondered about that, but I chose not to use that. I chose to do nothing about that, because I thought I'm gonna keep this professional on facts that were basic. That's it. Factors that I could admit, factors that I could support. And again, as I go back, not only is this my job, if somebody else wanna be here, they have every right to leave, but it is my job to make sure that things are done accordingly, that eight kids don't get hurt. And sometimes there may be a, a professional in the school, that it should be noted, that at no time, the MSU say, this was not validated. There are letters that they sent that you have copies of, they even say, and I will quote, give you one second, I apologize. Board, for pieces in the way. They wrote that one letter, they wrote two letters confirming that Memphis was just in their, in what we said. And as their attorney stated, that when these things were said, they had a right to retract it, or they had a right to fire, crack, you know, anything. Then it came back, and they still, they, they wrote those letters that you have, that say that, yes, we were just in our good mind. MSU didn't have to say that, they said it on two occasions. I would also go back to say that in regards to undue influence, you have a player that Cam has played with. You have a father who coached him here at Memphis, who stated on several occasions, that he coached him at other times in the AAU world. You have another coach who coached junior high, who is now a volunteer coach, who coaches at Armento. And then, of course, then you have the father. If you look at what I sent to the school board the other day, regarding volunteer, the state is very clear that a volunteer is anyone that asks you anything with the program. Be it a clerk, a volunteer, a volunteer coach, or a paid coach, or a paid, you know, a paid associate of, of either program. You know, I, I take this job very seriously. I take the, the care of kids very seriously. I stand by this report one hundred percent. I don't agree that at any time I ever said, "I don't answer to anybody." I sent information to the school board the other day, which is very clear. It says, "If either MSA bylaws, the athletic director, the principal, or the superintendent are looked upon by them as equal when it comes to filing a petition." That's what MSAA says. Anyone of those three can file a petition, number one. Number two, I met with administration on this. It took me a week before I sent anything out. That was through discussion with administration. That was through discussions with the MSAA. That was with discussions of other former retired ADEs that have been through this situation. I should also note that another reason I did it was my job was its past practice from our former, from our administration to do this, and petition a student athlete just right back five, six years ago, when we petitioned a kid that transferred to Richmond and it resulted in him not being able to play for a year. When I asked what protocol was used, since this is a problem, the response in writing was, "We didn't have a code." So at the same time frame, one student athlete went to Armento, one student athlete went to Richmond, one is petitioned by the school, one is not petitioned by the school. The school in question allows that student athlete to play even though they live in Memphis. Armento never sent paperwork confirming school choice. Uh, they basically enrolled our student athlete, our student athlete. I asked, "How? How did you do it? You have to notify us." They never did. And from what I understand, they still haven't. So, I stand by what I did. I did the best interest of Memphis sports. In clear conscience, at no time do I want to keep kids from playing. But unfortunately, the kids sometimes will get hurt by their parents' actions, by coaches' actions, or in this case, I believe, imposing schools' actions. I made a point earlier that I reached out several times to other parents who got direct communication. I reached out to the Coon, never got a response. Not only did they not respond, they, they emailed everybody else besides me to get those visual cards. And when I did, was able to, it would take a minute, go through everything. I went and got the visual cards and I sent them to me. Yes, I sent them with a letter and email to Armento. I did not petition the state almost a week later upon collecting all my information, stuff that I know, stuff that I can confirm, and stuff that I sent.
Thank you, Mr. Oke. All right, board, we've heard the summaries from, from his attorney, from Mr. Oke. This time I've opened up for questions from the board. You know, you folks all have reams of information in front of you. So please observe the same rules as that we asked previously. Please do not use student names. We'll start a question and answer. We'll get to the board to begin. Go ahead, Ms. Brown, if you have a question.
Yeah, is it, is it Mr. Mackening?
Yes.
Are you the one that's gonna be answering the questions? I don't know who to direct them to.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So a couple of questions. Um, one, you said that Armento was not gonna allow them to play until it was complete? That's right, okay. Is that not what happened because he became eligible to play anyways when it was completed, correct?
Because you're not eligible to participate until you move. Cam, excuse me, my son did not participate until we moved. Mr. Holson, the, 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 Armento, did not allow him to participate until we moved. And he was called dead and emailed the day after Mr. Oke, uh, signed the final complaints.
Okay. I thought I read, we had so much information over the, so much, honestly. Um, I believe I read at some point that he was allowed to practice, he just wasn't competing, right?
Right.
That's how he, right, right. So I just want, sorry, I don't know why I made this.
So you were not allowed to compete until you completed our bylaws and move?
Mm-hmm.
And he did not compete until he completed our move. However, if the MHSAA rules against you, it doesn't matter if you move. You're not eligible to hold you.
Correct.
But you are allowed to practice.
So you are allowed to practice.
And you can't compete.
Okay. All right, so he technically didn't miss out on, on like a competition or anything, right? Because I thought at some point you said there was a waiver or something, was that something?
No, he quit, he's not always able to react because of the complaint. The complaint should receive that again, so he did not, he did not compete until we moved. So you guys could all see something in that.
There, there is a waiver you could fill out when you're in between moving, that the MHSAA can rule on, say that you can participate, you really have to fully move because of certain circumstances. But because of the complaint, it is certainly allowed. You can't apply that.
Okay. And then you, you first started off saying that August twelve, you guys had a purchase agreement? Is that, of course, and then five days later, he filed the complaint, is that what?
It was two days later, it was August fourteen, two days after.
And, but on the twelfth, he was notified. So it was a, the purchase agreement for the Armento, am I wrong to say this? Okay, the Armento house, correct?
Yes.
And was that a purchase agreement contingent on the sale of your house?
No.
And then Mr. Oke provided us a lot of information with, um, with the MHSAA guidelines, too. Um, and he provided us information that you were a volunteer coach, you're not a paid coach, you're a volunteer coach for Armento, or you have volunteered. He didn't put specific dates that you were a volunteer last year or whatever, but you volunteered for the sports.
Which, I, I don't know which sport, which. I'm a volunteer coach at Armento currently.
You are?
No, I'm not.
You're not, but you have or something?
I coached probably fifteen years ago.
You haven't thought?
Then fifteen years ago, I was a basketball coach, and I used to coach track.
But you haven't volunteered at all?
I was a chaperone. I chaperoned a summer camp once a year for the cross-country team. It is much different than being a coach. That was one of the things that came up in our meeting. Uh, Mr. Goodney called, the MHSAA clarified. Uh, and, and the MHSAA does not consider chaperones to be coaches. I'm not out there telling the kids what to run, how to run. I'm just driving them to a location, dropping them off, picking them up. And for Mr. Oke, put in the complaint that he wrote to the MHSAA that I am a cross-country coach. That's not true on a chaperone, there's a difference there.
Yeah, I can't find it now, but I did read at some point that the MHSAA considers even a coach a volunteer. So that's where I'm at, that's where I was trying to clarify whether to the MHSAA, are you considered a coach because you're like a volunteer, is still considered not to be positioned as coaches?
You could be a volunteer without being a coach. I volunteered my time to chaperone kids. Mr. Goodney clarified this with the MHSAA. Chaperones are not considered coaches.
And then Mr. Lee provided.
Well, I mean, I, I'm not sure who Mr. Goodney spoke to, but I've yet ever in twenty years had anybody from the MHSAA go against their bylaw. Right here on page sixty-one, section three. Individuals paid, unpaid, or volunteer are considered coaches.
But you're not coaching.
It's black and white.
It's not coaching for lessons.
And the yearbook photos are those from the past ten year, ten years ago?
Well, that's when he was an official coach. He has recently, with one of the statements I got, I sent to you, I believe, last week, with the present coach of cross-country and track, that he has volunteered, that he has assisted in clerking, that he has chaperoned, and that is very recent. From the Armento coach.
Okay, then a first word. The chaperone involves a one-time thing. I mean, it's something you do one occasion, and it's not a coach. So I mean, to say that he's a coach for cross-country, that is, that is wrong. To say that he's a chaperone and does something once a year at one specific time, is acting.
And not going to any of the practices or any of the events.
It may be, you, 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 you chaperone you one thing in the summer, is that even during the season?
No, during the summer.
I mean, you do one thing in the off-season for a school that you, that is not equating, sending something to them, you could say, saying, "He's moving to Armento, so he can be coaching cross-country." But that, that is an act. And the important is, you put it in a word.
Okay, so also you put, you made the comment that organized, he, that the student wasn't organized basketball. AAU are not, to me, the MHSAA guidelines are pretty clear about the organized basketball. You're seeing that his time is relevant? I don't see anything in the MHSAA guidelines about a specific time that I see. It seems just a participating in organized basketball is a possible violation. So I guess you made the comment that the time, the amount of time is relevant? I'm guessing, I'm not sure where you're getting that, or if you can share that information, how much time specifically, because I'm not seeing that in the MHSAA guidelines.
Sure, so in February first, two thousand twenty-one, the MHSAA sent a letter saying about this, perhaps this statement, said, "The student seeks to participate with teammates or coaches whom she has participated in non-school competition."
Sorry, I might get off the map.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
"The student seeks to participate with teammates or coaches whom she has participated in non-school competition during the preceding twelve months." So what they're saying is, you're, you're balancing the factors between, is it that they're being motivated, or is it academically moved, or is it just the parents want to move, whatever? But the point is, is, it's a guideline to figure out what is, what is the relationship between the two, the two students? What, what are they doing together? So if it's AAU, that's organized basketball, high level. If it's a recreational, like, once on a Sunday, that's different. But the point is, is to be accurate and complete with what you said there. And, 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 and they specifically, MHSAA sent us a letter saying that one, we know about, "Student seeks to participate with teammates or coaches whom she has participated in non-school competition during the preceding twelve months." So the time is important, that's what it said, twelve months.
Well, I guess I don't understand, like, what determines organized basketball. You're trying to say that the Joe Dumars was not organized, but if it's a team and you're scheduled, I guess the amount of time doesn't matter whether you're on a rep team or a travel team and still organized, then, I might be self-organized, but that's still organized, it's different levels of commitment, still organizing, it's organized.
Joe Dumars is not AAU, AAU is a very specific organization.
Right. I, I agree with you on that. Uh, but it's still organized basketball, is it not?
Correct. Then why not say that he participated in organized basketball, Joe Dumars? What prevents you from stating that versus he participated in AAU?
I see what you're saying about that. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not denying that the difference between Joe Dumars for that, but I guess from the MHSAA guidelines, that the fact is that he did participate in organized basketball, which is a possible violation, or, I don't know how to word it, but it could be a potential reason for, to determine an athletically motivated transfer for the athletic director to question, not?
Well, again, it's not, it's not in terms of violations. They're just, they give you a factor to consider on whether or not it's athletically motivated transfer. So what if someone participated in organized basketball, something, they factor to consider if it's not athletically motivated transfer? So it's not, it's not a violation.
But it's a factor to consider.
It's a factor to consider.
And they put, nor wait on AAU because it's a higher level, uh, organization. Can't try out to make a team, correct? Maybe you show up there, you can play with the club. It's a big difference.
Yeah. I just have to go by what I see, like you said, like, you know what I mean? Like, I just have to go by, like, what MHSAA is, like, put out there, something that, like, that's your opinion, but like, that's not in there. So I don't, no disrespect, but like, that's what I'm just trying to go by as well. I mean, just AA guidelines, from my reading, my understanding. That's all, that's all I got from that.
May I ask a question based on?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, regarding the AAU and not being organized, um, you know, basketball, right here in the bylaws, the MHSAA bylaws say AAU is a direct conflict of the MHSAA bylaws. All organized sports are included. And we have documentation of this. So how can we say that the Joe Dumars was not considered AAU when it was an organized sport? And we have people received by the bylaws on the MHSAA saying this.
Okay, but then if you say that, saying Josh coaches when he does not.
I'm not talking about in coaching, I'm talking about the student playing.
I know that, but that's part of the complaint, that our son played and was coached by his father and his mother, all went back to the AAU opponent. Is there a way that MHSAA looks at that and says, "Wow, that's a big factor. They're really helping these kids get better." So we can't just say, "Well, we played organized basketball, but this is..." The fact is, I didn't coach him and didn't play with his under-parents that were leaving him. Because you can't separate blood, little piece, and say, "Oh, the rest," but it's untrue, that's a fake.
Well, what's the purpose of the MHSAA bylaws then? And stating that all organized sports are considered AAU? Why are we, I guess I'm confused, and Mr. Oke answer, Mr. Good?
I mean, the, 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 first off, let me explain something about AAU. It is not a higher level. There are higher levels. If you look at, what is a Mercedes? It's a cup. What's a Volkswagen? It's a cup. There's different levels of AAU. To say that athlete registered is false. I have parents here that will confirm that. I have athletes here at Memphis that have played AAU, got a ball called, ran, picked up a jersey, went and played AAU. This is not an organization that is always at the, when you look at the TV, you see McDonald's All-American, AAU, something like that, that is the highest level. Organized basketball can consist of a three-on-three at Sandusky High School. If you have a three-on-three at Sandusky High School right here in Memphis, and you can play as a teammate, that's considered organized basketball. And that's the bottom line.
Okay.
In reviewing the material, this is the letter, I'm sorry, October, February fir-, October fifteenth, MSA admits that there was, there was substance to what we were saying. And on February first, it says, "In reviewing the material submitted, it was clearly an appropriate request from Memphis High School. Any organized basketball activity would be within the scope of the regulation." They want to base that Joe Dumars, in their opinion, is not an AAU facility. I supply you with, I can take right on, right on Google, MSU Fieldhouse, I mean, AAU Fieldhouse. AAU games are played here.
And that's, that's why I'm asking this question, because I, I've seen the letter in the bylaws from the MHSAA, and it's saying that all organized sports are basically considered AAU. Um, and it's in a direct conflict with their bylaws. So I, I, I guess I'm a little bit confused here. Um, you know, we're getting it directly from the appropriate party, from the state. So where, where else are we to argue the state being wrong when they gave this answer? And, and, correct me, and Mr. Goodney, anyone else that knows more information about the rules? But when we're reading this directly? But when we're getting this directly from them, why are we, why are we going further with what their rules are and their bylaws? And I, I need this to be?
Well, I agree.
You know, I apologize if this may sound like an ignorant question, but I do need some enlightenment here if we are getting this response from, from the agency that's saying that this is a conflict with their bylaws. Why, why are we going further with this?
I, I asked the same question.
And I, and I'm not disrespecting anybody, I'm asking for clarification.
Okay. Mr. Druck, do you have a question for the respondent in complaint at this point? We can, we can talk, we can debate that subject amongst the board. They obviously disagree.
Mr. Coop, can I ask?
I guess my question on this though is, did you receive this letter as well stating this was not a, this was a conflict in the bylaws?
I don't know what letter you're referring to.
From the MHSAA letter? Did you receive a copy of that stating that this was a drug conflict?
Are you talking about a clean letter, or do you think that that was possible?
It was, it was a separate, I believe it was, there's so much.
Not exactly, there's so much, so many documents.
It was from the.
The determination letter saying that this was a conflict. Did you receive a copy? I want to know if you guys received that copy?
I've never received one.
Okay. So the claim's taken there, and I guess that's why I was saying that if you received that copy as well.
And it's, I think it's to Drake Oke. Okay.
Well, it's to several people. It's to Brad Goodby, Matt Crabb, Drake Oke, Mike Hodger, Kelly Sko, I can't pronounce it. Skokna.
Mr. Druck, hold on a second.
Can I ask clarification?
Hold on, hold on. Mrs. Druck, so heads to the floor. I have a point of information. Mr. Goodby, was that letter provided to all parties as you requested?
October 15th, 2020, no. October 15th, 2020.
Yes, sir.
Is it October 15th?
That's October 15th, yes.
It's in the back.
It's in the back. Okay, Mrs. Druck, this is Tom, so I'd like to ask the question.
Can I just clarify what I come at here with? So that was not, was that package given to Coon Valley? That's why I'm asking, because I'm getting to the void of question. So the Coons did receive, and you're our choir director, they did receive exactly the letter discussing right now?
I'm looking to verify that, but yes.
Can you read that letter? Mrs. Druck, will you yield the floor to Mr. Thompson for a clarification question?
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Mr. Thompson.
I just have a question. I don't hear you denying that your child played in organized sports. And they weren't at the AAU level. You're just denying the fact that your husband coached him in these sports, or organized sports?
There are many things stated in the complaint that are true. We never contested, we had not moved. So Daniel was not eligible to play sports until we did. We knew that, we knew that rule. Um, we never contested, he played basketball, our kids were in the league. Our complaint is about all of the things that are not accurate. My husband did not coach. My son wore an AAU jersey. I was at, and Mr. Oke by his condition, that I never saw them coach together. He said that to me. He said, I never saw them play together, but I never saw them put. Our complaint is not the things that, like, that, we're not trying to discuss the fact of value of AAU. What tries to say is in our complaint, the things that are not, that are not true, concerns. And we're like going way off, I think sometimes it's wild, is it?
Just really, oh, yeah. I specifically didn't move as one, as an AAU organization. I just said he didn't coach AAU. That that was never so, then I, I never even, I tried to avoid this argument.
I'm sorry, I feel like I started that.
It's not one, I said it.
No, our clarification is just me, when you say your husband is moving your kid to coach them in all these different sports at a school, that is a vague statement. And the MHSAA looks at, whoa, I mean, that's a strong statement to say. He coaches cross-country, and this kid runs cross-country. He coaches basketball, this kid plays basketball. He coaches track, this kid runs track. That looks very misleading, when it's not an accurate statement. To say my husband drives kids in our van to cross-country camp, wanting to be here to help his friend who is coached out, or clerks at the track day, as a parent volunteer, that's not coaching those teams. And that's a very different distinction, that you're kind of misleading the MHSAA into believing things about their intention to move your kid that are not accurate. That was our complaint. It wasn't the definition of AAU, it was stating that he coached and we did.
I guess the reason why I was asking that question specifically, because I believe that you guys reasoned for filing this complaint, you felt like the complaint should have never been filed, right? So my question for that is because that under your own issue about organized basketball is that it is a factor to consider of why our athletic director would file the complaint. I guess that's where I was kind of going at that. It was a factor to consider because he did, that does violate the MHSAA guidelines, or not violate, I'm assuming somewhere. It is a factor to consider that there was a possible violation. So that's why I just wanted to clarify to that. Sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson, so before, you have a follow-up question?
No, that, that's fine. I just, I just wanted to make sure that you weren't contesting the claim.
Okay. I'm sure. Mrs. Thompson, you want to, you have a question?
No, no, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Druck.
Um, first I'd like to ask you, I find it extremely hard to hear with the mask on. So Mrs. Coon, if you could person answer. My question to you is, in this whole series, what is the damage?
Are you talking about collective behavior, so like, school, kids, people, like, can you be more specific? Does that have to do with school? Like, what do you mean by damage? And can you be more specific? Because I can answer that in a variety of ways, so I just want to answer your question, on your asking.
Okay, and one other question, point of clarification. Um, in your documents, um, one of the things you state is that, in essence, your private business went out to the public, kind of situation, and that is bothersome, and I'm trying not to paraphrase you, but.
Right.
How did it get out to the public?
How did what get out to the public?
What was that?
How did what get out to the public?
How did, how did your private information get out to the public?
Well, our complaint.
Or personal information?
Our complaint, so the complaint to the MHSAA, the actual complaint, that was our rebuttal, listing our reasons and our, um, I guess, disproving the facts that were not factual. Um, and then all the communication that were between us and Armenta, and their rebuttal, and Memphis, all of that was shared with other people that were not through into this decision-making process. People who were not attracted to coach, people who were employees of the district who had no relationship to this information. That was all shared with them. And then when the decision was finalized with the MHSAA, and we find that we were unclear, and our son was eligible to compete, I made a Facebook post stating what had happened. Factual information. Our son couldn't compete, we had this complaint filed, it was very upsetting. This is why you guys have been running. A lot of information in the complaint is not true. So if that's what you're referencing, there's that.
Okay, I, I caught part of it, and I'm sorry, that's, that's at my end. But I just want to clarify, it's my understanding, this went out on social media, is that correct?
What do you mean, this went out? Was a lot?
That you're, the story of your concern, the, the answer of this whole thing.
The, if I, if the MHSAA had complained.
Okay. Who sent it out on, on Facebook, or whatever?
Twitter.
You did.
I did, I did complain on social media, I didn't list documents on there, that's what I'm saying.
It was on Facebook, correct?
By?
Put it out by you?
By?
You put it out on Facebook?
By personal statement, which you have, that has a price for it.
I, I don't do Facebook, so I put this.
You have the copy of my Facebook post, you can add that.
Okay. I just want to clarify that you put information out on Facebook about this situation.
That I filed the answer.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Coop, can I ask a question on?
Yes, by the spirit.
What was the date of that Facebook post? Because we were not, um, given that information. Not the exact date, I did not receive.
October 16th.
Because that was not on the board at that time.
Mr. President, may I, um, address both parties?
Yes, Mr. Druck.
Mr. and Mrs. Coon, um, I would like to start by saying to you that I cannot begin to imagine the feelings you have felt in the past year with this situation on top of moving your family and a global pandemic while both of you are in the education field. I would like to thank you. I would like to tell you that I have read numerous documentation. Marty was kind when he said it was 200 pages. I feel that I speak for the board when I say the amount of information we have gotten in the past two months has been more than overwhelming to any of us. With that being said, I also want to note that although you feel you have been maybe pointed out, or you feel like you're on the pedestal and this is coming down on you, I want you to know that this situation is so much larger than your family and the situation with an administrator here at the school. It is now affecting the community. It has affected each one of us on this board. Some of us have had children who have had you as a teacher. Some of us have children who are going to be up and coming, working with the administrator. There are community members that are now involved. And it's now gotten to the point where I can only imagine that the morale in your building is not super great because of this. There's probably tension between the two buildings. I'm speculating, because I can't imagine what it would be like to be in your shoes. With that being said, we have received a letter from your attorney stating what you would like to see happen. We have a procedure that's now put in place to make sure that this will not happen again. What can we do at this point to move forward?
We just wanted the opportunity to have our voice heard, um, to clear the air, because even after we've gone through all of this, like, we just sat and listened to another statement filled with things that are not true. It's, like, that slideshow I sent you, you can literally look for yourself and see photographic evidence of the things that they are claiming is not true. It's just not true, and we're just sick of the lies.
To this day, he continues to double down on it, and say that these things are true when they're not. He's never once even considered retracting anything or apologizing. And he's just steaming forward straight ahead, as if he's right all along. And he's not.
Okay. I want to just make sure that I understand.
If I might.
Yes.
Our, our goal here is, and this has been very difficult for our family, that's kind of hard to interpret, so. But we pushed through and persevered to this point with a hope that we can make a difference so that this does not happen to another family. That is our goal.
Thank you, Mr. Coon. And I can tell you that our administration has put together a procedure in place where this will not happen to another family. I can apologize to you personally that an employee of Memphis Community Schools had to go through something like this. At the same time, I, I would like to take a minute to address Mr. Oki. On the flip side of everything that I've said to you, Mr. and Mrs. Coon, I, I really want you to, um, just hear me out on what I'm going to say to Mr. Oki. Mr. Oki, I appreciate the amount of passion you have for the Memphis Athletic Department. I have never been more informed on any of the sporting events until the last two years. Everywhere I go, I find out if our sports teams have won, where they're playing, who's doing this, who's doing that. The amount of passion you show for the Memphis Athletic Department is quite admirable. And it's quite refreshing, if I can speak honestly. We haven't had something like that in a very long time. I can, without knowing all the ins and outs of what the duties and responsibilities are of your role as athletic director, I can see why you would have wanted to petition the MHSAA. Okay, I think it's important to note that although the MHSAA did find, they determined that, and I'm going to quote their determination letter, the MHSAA staff has determined that a reasonable person, given the same information, would not find that the change of schools for the student in question and a former student was primary, primarily for athletic reasons. They went on to say, it is important to note that while the circumstances in this matter did not rise to the level of violation, there were a number of points raised by Memphis that showed these transfers were not solely about academics either. I think that's important to know. I think somewhere along the lines, maybe, I'm speculating, maybe there's a grudge with Armenta. Armenta, hey, they've got some awesome families that came from Memphis. I honestly want to just say that I don't think either party is wrong here. Mr. and Mrs. Coon, I don't think you were wrong for, um, coming forward to the board and, and bringing this to our attention. And Mr. Oki, I don't think that you were wrong in filing this report with the MHSAA. I feel that both parties are very passionate about the circumstance. Personal feelings are involved, and at this point, it has gotten beyond, it, it's gotten out of control. We need to find a way to move forward. We cannot, as a board, spend this amount of time on a situation between two employees, or we need to focus our attention on the school. Yes, Mr. Druck?
The part where you read, the MHSAA found some fault. Can you read that part again? The MHSAA, again, you said what?
It is important to note that while the circumstances in this matter did not rise to the level of violation.
And the next part?
Yep, there were a number of points raised by Memphis that showed these transfers were not solely about academics. So is that right there?
Our point is.
Your point, yes.
They made them bullying with inaccurate information.
Okay.
So that's clearly why they're saying there's some points of concern.
But that's your opinion?
We, we proved in our lot of all misinformation that you put in there.
I'm not saying there's no misinformation, but there's an information in there that does, as we already went over, that it does raise to a question of, well, there's, you can't sit there and say it's because of, he said this, or he said, because this was that. You can't really say that accurately, honestly.
If you take out the seven points that we went over, that were accurate, there's not a whole lot to say.
But there's still points, that's what, I mean, that's what, I'm not, I'm not going to get into that because I'm not MHSAA, so I can't sit there and say, was that enough information to sit there and say it still rises to points or not? The, the point is that there still is. So I'm not going to really, I don't want to argue that point, because we won't know that. We're not privy, we're not clear for MHSAA to make those and stuff like that. But I agree with Leslie when she says, there's no winner here. And I appreciate everything Mr. Oki does and Ms. Coon, you're obviously highly loved across the street. But there is no winner here. But I guess the same thing that she was saying is, how do we go forward? What are you guys looking to get out of here? Because I remember before you guys stated that you just don't want this to happen to other, any other family again. And I'm guessing you mean by the misinformation that you felt was put out there because I can't ever guarantee that Memphis is never going to challenge a transfer for athletically again. We couldn't do that, you know? We have a procedure, we have the back, which you guys are aware of. I'm sure Mr. Coon, you went over that for our resolution, correct?
Here's me, the whole son of a cow, who speaks mistruths against this house and still to this day is not attracted to anything or claiming anything wrong.
Would you be sufficiently happy with an apology from Mr. Oki?
Are you, I mean, I-
Can I have a follow-up, Mr. Coon, please?
One second, sir. Thompson, just asking if you could ask a question. I'll come right back to you. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Mr. Oki, when you filed a complaint with MHSAA and they come back with it, when they talk about correcting some of the information that might have been incorrect, are these on permanent record with their son's name on it?
First off, first off, they never, to answer your question, they never said that there was anything inappropriate. They were sent to the Coons. The Coons had an opportunity to rebuttal. They proved no evidence that anything that they're saying is true and mine was faulty. Zero evidence. Yet I supplied three witnesses that are in the audience, if you'd like to ask that, that directly heard them say, and the other party say, "We played AU together, coached AU together, mother reached out that, you know, just played AU at dinner party." And then a third, or athlete in question, admitted that he's played AU and played AU at dinner party.
But I guess they're not, they're not denying that part of it, but I'm saying some of the other information-
With all due respect, yeah. Because, because they're saying it's untrue. But the state of Michigan has never said this is untrue or this is untrue or this is untrue.
They admit that their child didn't play in other organized sports. They've said that tonight. But one of the things that they were saying is some of the other things that are in it from the state, if those things were taken back, is this something on file with their child's name on it that does have inaccurate information in that report with MHSAA?
No, ma'am.
So it's just a done deal now?
But there was nothing, the state had never said this was inaccurate, this was inaccurate, this was inaccurate. They had a chance to rebuttal. Then they contacted me and said, "Do you have anything to add?" I said, "No. The original submission is what I submitted." There was nothing from the state of Michigan saying these things are inaccurate, ever.
Okay. Sir, no one's asked you a question. I ask you not to respond directly to Mr. Oki. Someone can ask you a question if you'd like. Go ahead, Mr. Thompson.
I guess that would be my next question is, did you have a chance to respond to the state of Michigan on the violations that Mr. Oki had told them or his factors or whatever?
Yeah, we filed a rebuttal, pointing out all the inaccuracies. My point is, the MHSAA really doesn't have any way of knowing. Is he telling the truth or are we telling the truth? They're not going to come and do interviews and figure out what's going on. Thank you. Mr. Thompson, the link's red and green. All right, I'm back. Mr. Thompson, do you have any question?
I did, I kind of blanked right at the moment after all this. To the Coon family, first of all, I wanted to make a statement and a question. Me questioning you earlier and also talking about the bylaws and the rules of AU was me asking questions and making sure you received those documentations. Because we do have FOIA requested and it is mandated with FOIA that you receive everything that the other party and we all have received. So that is clarification that I'm trying to make with you. It was not as to be argumentative. I was questioning because it is very confusing and we do have hundreds of pages. And you have to take into consideration, I just joined the board in January and I had three, four months of back work I had to do on top of everything I've been receiving. Again, I agree with Leslie, Ms. Rosemount. Every parent, every teacher, any student has the right and should have the rights here, they're always heard. And you coming forward tonight, as Leslie said, we have put in a new policy with procedure to not let this happen again. It seems like the same question is being asked the newest board members of what is wanted by your family as a resolution or to make this better. And it seems like we're not getting a clear answer of what you want out of this. You clearly stated you do not want this to happen again to another student. We have a procedure in place now for this not to happen. You are concerned about five different items that were supposedly inaccurate information. I can't prove that. I can't disprove that. I'm not here to do that. Can you please answer me, with those, with the information you feel is incorrect, what would you like as us, the school board, to do about that inaccurate information? What do you want done? We need a clear answer. It seems like we're not getting it.
I think it's important to note that it's not just what was put to the MHSAA complaint with the actor, but it's also the things that took place afterwards in our meetings when he continued to lie about this and say mistruths. I think a person who has that kind of integrity, I guess, a lot better off should, that's what I'm saying. And we didn't go over through all the mistruths and lies, but it's in the information he gave.
But that's interrupted. We're going off the mark of what my question was. What do you want out of the information that you feel is inaccurate and with all due respect, what do you want and what do you feel is a resolution of what you want out of this with the false information that you are claiming?
He needs appropriate discipline that is equal to the damage that he has done.
And what do you feel was the damage?
He continues to lie. He's still right here in front of you tonight and he's spread more lies and inaccuracies.
I still, I still feel we're not getting a clear answer of what you want.
I don't know what you're going to say.
Do you want us to say exactly what we want the board to say?
No, I want to hear from you, what you want as a resolution, what you want done. We've got a procedure in place now for this not to happen again.
I don't think the procedure will help when the person in charge of the athletic department is still-
Okay, and that I understand. But I'm still not getting an answer and the board's not giving an answer of what you ultimately want out of this. One more, please.
I think there's, it's the board's decision on what the incorporated recipe is in terms of proper management. Whatever it is that you decide, it's your decision. We can't-
And with all due respect, I understand that, but we have hundreds of pages, hundreds of pages to go over. And it is very hard for us to decipher some of this, of what is true and what is not true. We're getting documentation from the state saying that this is true, but then people are coming up, it is not true. This has gotten to the point where, like as Ms. Rosemount stated, it is very overwhelming. And at this point in time, it's very difficult to figure out what is true, what is not true from all parts, not just one party, all parts. And that's why I'm clearly asking you, because you're here today requesting this hearing, what do you want out of this?
I would directly with page seven, my April 23rd, 2021.
I can feel through it.
I would directly with page seven, my April 23rd, 2021 corresponds. On page seven, you have direct quotes from what the director at the department stated to the meeting supervisor. And he, and he, there's no way to do it. He just, he lied to the meeting supervisor on that page. So you can look at the quote, you can look at what he said on page seven.
God, I what?
Okay, hold on, Mr. Thompson. Now, Mr. Thompson, I would, I would remind Mr. McNamee that that recording is not part of this proceeding. That recording has not been heard by members of this board. Pardon me, excuse me, I didn't ask the question. That video or that audio tape has not been listened to by members of this board on advice of counsel. And so we won't be talking about that. I believe I spoke of that in the documents beforehand. Do we have any other questions from the board?
Mr. President, I don't have a question, but I feel it may be worthy to read over the new Memphis Athletic Transfer Procedure so everybody knows that.
Mr. President, I just to coin a border here, we're still in the question phase. We have an opportunity to debate as a, as a board. We can do that. I'd ask you to hold that until we're done with the questions.
I guess, Mr. Coon, I guess my question would be, is going over that, like, because they did have a topic of that, is because Mr. Coon made the comment that, where I feel like that would be relevant, is that he felt like it's one person, it's not one person. So knowing this information, that it's a collaboration of people and then how there was no procedure before where our superintendent ever had approved this before, well, now he has this final approval from it. So I guess going further, what more from that do you feel like that this new procedure, I guess I would want to know that you don't feel would be effective in not letting this go forward again for another family?
Well, I was still speaking and still waiting for the answer and, you know, unfortunately got cut off somewhere along this. And that was exactly what my point was going to be in addition to asking the question and drug into the Coons on what they want out of this, you know, and make sure, as Ms. Boxey just had informed, that the new procedure has been put in place, that this does have to go through a committee before it gets sent to the state in the future. So that is another policy slash procedure that's been put in place. But again, going back to my question, it still has not been answered.
You wish to answer the question or are you through? Okay, we'll move on. Any other board members have any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Oki, I just, I guess I have one question again. Is it usually a general practice of yours that if you have a concern or something dealing with a Memphis family, that you don't talk to the family first before you would take an action to to try to solve problems in-house before sending it to the state?
Ms. Thompson, that's a great question. And if we refer back to about a half hour ago, I stated that I had reached out to all the families. Every one of them, and the ones that did not return my phone call were the Coons. I spoke to the other three families that left, every family member, student, athlete, parent, one that transferred to another college, that student actually came back, another student that went to Richmond, I spoke with the parent and the athlete, I co-spoke with the athlete. I reached out to them, they never returned my call.
Okay, but am I misunderstanding? You said that you worked very quickly that day and it was a heavy day and within five hours you had the email ready to-
No, I said I had the physical card ready to go. He said, and I'll be honest with you, most people don't have a legal carrier now. We've had people come to us now with the same type of requests and we wait weeks, months, and sometimes they just throw the document. Of the four transfers that had left, which one came back, they all, not one of them required a physical card. When they acquired a physical card, the other required it from me personally, but I'll spare it. They actually emailed other people, never once emailed me. I called and it wasn't very good for me yet, so. I'm going to answer the question. I did call them to try to get ahold, yes.
Before sending it to-
Oh, I understand, yes.
Mr. and Mrs. Coon, is, did he reach out to you prior to when you found out that it had been submitted to the state, to the best of your knowledge?
Yeah, I heard it was all in our meetings. He said, "I couldn't find the number."
So why are you-
In the five hours that we're talking, it's not going out of physicals. We're saying, given five hours of us notifying the office, we want our records, which we notify the secretary, because that's who we've had, that's who we normally notify the usual. Five hours later, responding with Don, saying, "He's going to file a complaint," that I'm saying. Now, I'm talking about five hours to meet a physical. How about five hours between fighting our ruling and saying they're going to file an athletically motivated complaint? That's five hours.
I have a couple of questions, just to follow up to that, Mr. Oki. When you say, there should be some confusion about five hours, what exactly were you referring to? Can you walk us through that, please?
Well, I mean, the physical cards were set in that evening, so I can't take responsibility, which was, you know, referred to several times on the meeting. I can't take responsibility for their athletic director that given it to them. So it's in the email that I sent to you, that email out. The inquiry with the athletic director that Armada was after discussions with our administration, was trying to get ahold of them. I never said I could get ahold of them. I got the number of the physical cards and I was forwarded. They asked me where I called them. I said, "The number's in the physical card." That's what I said.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Oki. Mr. McNamee, earlier you spoke about one of the residency exceptions in the Michigan Athletic Association bylaws. Could you share with us which of the eight residency exceptions would pertain to this situation?
So, are you saying that bylaws regarding residential moves, if you make a move, a full complete move, you're held, the issue here was that if you realize that it's athletically motivated, it's, so normally all you have to do is move. But if you, even if you make the full, complete move, if there's a complaint filed and if there's a finding that it's athletically motivated, residential move means nothing. So that's why I never understood why there was all this talk of the move. Because if it's athletically motivated, the move doesn't matter. So if there was like, woo, Congress pays the taxes on the rule, it doesn't happen. The move doesn't matter if it's athletically motivated.
Okay. Well, in your statement earlier, you said that the Coons could have gotten one of the residency, one of the residency exceptions in the bylaws. So my question is, you brought that up, I didn't bring that up. Which one of the eight residency exceptions were you referring to when you brought that up? And where is the residential waiver in the MHSAA handbook? There are eight residency exceptions and I do not believe any of them would pertain to this situation. So if there is another exception that you know of, your attorney brought it up, so I guess I would ask your attorney, what residency exception were you referring to?
I, I'm going to go with, so we-
Okay, Mr. Coon, which, which exception were you referring to? It's not talking about residency exceptions. It's not called residency waiver. It's not listed under the eight exceptions, but you're reading there, residency.
So a family, let's say, for example, a family is building a home and they're moving into a new home that is not finished yet and they're in the Bay City district, they are a regular family that they're renting. Sometimes you can be for the MHSAA saying, "I think they're old in this school, we can't leave our home yet." They're being in school or can they be in sports? That would already, I mean, already first, their home, they leave home, they close on it, put it in, because that one was the name of it. And so you can wait for neighbors to the MHSAA asking for a way to play and just do that.
And do you have a document- And do you have a document that has it somewhere listed by the MHSAA? Okay.
I can't find anything. I mean, that was, when I seen the email, I could never find anything about it, really, first.
What other questions does the board have to see?
I think, Mr. Cook, I have a question. I'm not sure who to direct this to. Um, but reading according to the guidelines, academic versus athletically motivated transfers. What I read today was basically if it was ac- academically, the, the student does not have to be living in that district. The home does not have to be in the district of the school they're, are transferring to. However, if it is athletically motivated, their residence has to be in that school district. I read that today in, on one of these pieces of paper. Can anybody clarify that for me, if that is accurate, what I read?
Yeah, I believe, as I have read the MHSAA guidelines, um, what you're referring to would be school of choice, if you don't live in the district. Um, and you would be a school of choice, um, student. Um, that does have some different connotations for athletic events. There is mandatory, I believe there's a mandatory sit-down period if you're a school of choice.
So, so they could travel from that place to that school for athletics, but academic, or for academics, but athletically, their home has to be in the district?
Um, not, well, not necessarily. If, if I had a child in school and I live in the Memphis School District, I'm going to send my child to Yale. I could do that as a student of choi- or a, a school of choice. However, if my student was a high school athlete, they'd have to sit out here.
They're just not looking, exactly, I mentioned that, okay?
Okay. So, does the board have any other questions for any of the complainants responding to this matter? Okay, the question and answer is handed. Open it up to the board to discuss anything amongst, uh, the board at this time. If there's no discussion, I would remind the board of the four, amended from three, um, ways that we would close and conclude this hearing. Number one would be to take no action. Number two would be direct the superintendent to reopen the case and perform additional investigation of the conclusion. Number three would be take action according to the Board of Education conclusion. Or number four, table this complaint pending further discussion.
Mr. President, may I have the floor?
You may, Ms. President.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that it would be important to note, or am I allowed to discuss out loud what the new procedure is?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Some of you might want to supply.
So the Memphis athletic transfer procedure, when the athletic director becomes aware of the transfer of a student athlete to another district, um, the athletic director will contact the parents of the student athlete to discuss the transfer. If the athletic director suspects the transfer to be athletically motivated, she or he will gather evidence related to the transfer to present to the MAC, Memphis Athletic Committee. The MAC will convene to discuss the relevant facts and determine if there is sufficient evidence per the MHSAA bylaws to file an athletically motivated transfer petition to the MHSAA. The process should take more than, no more than fourteen days. That committee is going to consist of the athletic director, the high school principal, the high school assistant principal, a varsity coach, not the coach of the student athlete, and one MEA-appointed representative. Once the decision has been made by the committee, the athletic director will present the evidence and recommendation to the superintendent for final approval. All petitions filed with the MHSAA will be completed in accordance with MHSAA bylaws. I think it's important to note that because one of the main complaints from the Coon family is they are concerned with, as they stated, the athletic director's truthfulness, showing that we will have an additional five members on this committee, or, excuse me, an additional four in addition to the athletic director, I think will prevent that from happening. Any number of those on the committee will be provided with the information and I would assume can investigate as they deem necessary. On top of all of that, then the superintendent will also have the same capabilities. I don't know at this point if, I, I don't know how anyone else feels. I don't know at this point if we can, if we can take this any further. I would like to make a motion.
Ms. Thompson?
I'm sorry?
Are you done?
Yes.
Ms. Durst, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, take no action on this issue as presented.
I'm sorry, Ms. Durst? Motion on the floor, but Ms. Durst, part of my business is to take no action. Any discussion?
Mr. Cook, I'd like to address the board. I, I think that one of the problems I have with this, I do not, I agree with you. I do not believe that this needs to be re-investigated. I don't think we need to spend any more time, you know, trying to come up with the information. Um, I do believe that the letter of reprimand, that the information that we have is there. What concerns me is that I don't know if the new policy has anything that's going to prevent us from hurrying to react. I think we hurried too quickly in this case, possibly, not sure. I think that the non-factual information was not corrected. And, and if we're going to restore justice, we have two school employees here that are still very upset. You know, and, and are we doing anything to bring back with exceptional employees some calmness in our district? So I'm not sure that there's another action that we can take. But I would hope that whether through restorative practices, whether through something, that we figure out how, you know, whether it's an apology for the feeling or the inactual information, um, because there was inaction, or non-factual information in the report. Um, there were past incidents with our MADA that was brought into the, to this situation that had nothing to do with the Coon family. Um, and so I think that there's a lot of stuff going on that we've done everything, I think, as a board. I don't think we need to reopen the investigation. But I do believe that there has to be some restorative practice done to put an end to this. Because I understand that there was no answer on what was, what was asked for.
That's what I'm trying to...
And I do want to clarify that in this specific instance, this is a parent talking to us. She's not representing herself. I, I understand she's a valued member of the, of the teaching group. But this is coming from a parent, so it's a little bit, it's not a teacher that's being, whatever you want to call it, disadvantaged. This is a parent that's talking to us today.
I, I would, I would, I would say that, um, I believe that, well, it's the fact that this is a parent of a student, um, that brought this complaint. Now, I would say that the, um, the onus to, as the, as both the complainant and the respondent, our employees at the school, I believe that the, that falls clearly on the shoulders of the administration to make that happen. I believe that that's, uh, part of our duty. Uh, I think it's our duty to, uh, make sure that all of our employees work well together. However, I would leave that to the folks that we have hired and paid to do those jobs. We're here to, we're here to address the complaint and complain only at this point.
So, Mr. Cook, you're saying that the board couldn't add on to there that our administration is to do some restorative practice in some way, shape, or form, whether it's apologies or meeting or whatever to cover some of the issue?
The board has the opportunity to come to its own conclusion, which would be point three. Um, that is a pretty open, that's a pretty open, um, choice. However, the, the motion on the floor right now, um, is to take no action.
Mr. Cook, can I interject something?
Yes, ma'am.
Based off of what Ms. Thompson is, is stating here, I completely understand where she's coming from. However, it's been asked numerous times what actions were wanted by the complainant, and with no answer. So at this point in time, I want to justify my reasoning for supporting the motion. It was asked numerous times what was wanted out of this. And there was ample opportunity to answer that question. And it was not answered, and again, my reason for supporting Mr. Durst's motion.
Oh, Mr.?
Thank you, Ms. Durst.
Mr. President, I actually believe that they did give a reason and what they would like out of this and that there, you know, that to just, to acknowledge that we need to acknowledge that there was some wrongdoings done, that in both, you know, there was a lot of passion in this situation. We have a, uh, we have a, an athletic director that's very passionate about his job, but we have, you know, parents that are also passionate about, you know, their, their child and everything. And, and there were some wrong things said. And I think that what they're wanting to do is just to have that acknowledged and that and by the board doing nothing, it's, it's saying that, that what we, you know, we, we, I think with, you know, that we should probably, let's say, something about that or have some sort of a restoration. Because we do also have two wonderful employees that we want to keep. And we want them to be able to work together, even though it is in two different buildings. We want to have this be a unit. We want our school to be, to be unified. We're going into a vote next week where we're bringing, you know, we're wanting to, we want everybody to be on board and we want, you know, our school to continue and to be really great in the, in the, um, in our school district. You know, we want people to come here. We don't want them to know, well, did you know about that, and about that? But, so it, it, I think it is time that we do acknowledge that there was some wrongdoings done. And, and if there could be some restorative practice or something, to, some sort of an apology or something that, you know, that could be done, you know, I don't, I don't think by taking the, the stand of the board doing nothing is just like, oh, thank you very much, we're not going to do anything. I, I don't...
Well, my point is that it was asked numerous times and we're not given a straight answer. Um, it, it was even asked, do you want an apology? There was no straight answer. So this gets very difficult for us as board members to make a decision when we can't get direct answers with what is wanted out of this. We've offered, do you want an apology? Do you want X, Y, and Z? We got no answer. So this is, again, the reason why I'm standing and supporting Mr. Durst's motion. If they would like to interject at the moment with Mr. Cook's approval or whatever he decides as our president. But that question was asked at least ten times with no answer. So how can we, as a board, know what to fix when we are not giving what they want? The procedures have already been changed, so this does not happen again. The procedure was put in place for there to be three to four different people in a room next time there's, there's a, a transfer that's questionable. So if there is erroneous information being said, false information being said, there's going to be witnesses. At this point in time, I don't know, as a board member, and I'm being completely honest, what more we can do when we're not getting an answer of what is wanted.
Mr. President?
I, I'm sorry, can I, are you done?
Just saying.
Go ahead, I just want to address, Ms. Durst. We, we're past the question and answer, we're discussing the board at this point. Go ahead, Ms. Thompson.
Um, I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, Brad, you could probably answer this for me. Was that restorative justice already offered?
Yes.
Sorry.
We've contacted a company that donates if anything, but it's out.
Was that something that was wanted from the Coon family?
It has not been asked for, but we're, we've investigated it, but nothing's been arranged.
Okay. Because if restorative justice is unsuccessful, we're back here again, right? Like, what, where do we go from there, is what my question is?
No, the goal of restorative practice is just to get everybody on the same page and, and, you know, again, it's, it's a means of getting past this. It doesn't bring us back here if it's not, there's not going to be a, a decision made in restorative practice. Again, so it's not coming back, it's, again, it's an opportunity for them to be discussed, get their feelings out, basically, you know, hear both sides openly. Um, with an mediator that can help, hopefully patch up against some ideas of how to repair that relationship.
Okay. So I know there's a lot of, feel like mistrust from this side. And then the, the issue that I have is, um, because I can't come back to this stuff. Like, this has taken up so much time of everyone on this board, tiring resources from all this information, our focus out to tonight is to be right back onto the district. I feel very strongly about that. This has taken up way too much, it's gone on too long, and it's taken up too much of our resources. Um, going forward with that, I really, do we need to make a motion for restorative justice as a board? Can that not just be for us as a board, we're not taking any more action, and then you yourself can reach out to them? But if the Coons don't want restorative justice, we, I mean, what are we, what's the point of the board doing that?
If, if I may, um, I think it's important to clarify that there are two relationships here. A parent and an administrator is what we're dealing with tonight. What Mr. Goodman, his administration has to deal with is, is our two valued employees of this district. Both of them, um, I've told both of them personally that they both do an excellent job in their job. That's not what you're talking about tonight from a parent perspective. But I believe that it is the administration's role as leaders to work within their respective employee groups. And so I would imagine that out of a hundred and some employees of the district, there's probably the folks that get along better than others. Um, like any company, like any business, like any organization. You're going to have people that get along better than others. That's why you have a professional administrator to work through those things. I think that's not in our scope today. I think we certainly have spoken on the record about it. But at this time, this is parent and administrator that we're dealing with a complaint on right now. Recognizing that, uh, the complainant, who's a parent, is also a teacher, but that may take no bearing in this complaint and should not take any bearing in this complaint. Any other discussion between the board members?
May I, um, ask a question to our superintendent?
Sure.
Um, I guess I don't really want to say this politically correct. It, it, what is typically done in a situation when, um, a parent comes to the board with a situation... What is typically done in a situation when a parent comes to the board with a situation and you're kind of at a standstill? Has this happened before? Is there a protocol that we follow?
Uh, no, to be honest. We've had, you know, parents' number looks before, we've been able to work with them, and that's the, we would sit down, I'll have conversations with all parties after the meeting tonight, and see where we're at, if there's anything else that can be done. Obviously, I'm not a fire, but specific protocols is in place.
Okay. Thank you. I would like to say that I do agree with Mrs. McHugh when she stated that Mr. and Mrs. Coon have desperately wanted their situation heard, and it has, it has come to us, and I do believe that she is right. We cannot just sit here and say, "Okay, thank you." I'm not saying that I know what the answer is, but I do agree with Mrs. McHugh on that.
Any other discussion amongst the board? Motion on the floor. By Mrs. Durst, supported by Mrs. Dirck. Take no action at this time. In favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 opposed?
No.
No.
You call the board, please.
Mr. Cook?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
No.
Mrs. McHugh?
No.
Mrs. Durst?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rosebuck?
No.
Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Vote for the three, motion passed. That will conclude complaint 2020-21-1. We'll move on to harassment complaint 2020-21-2. Go ahead. Sure. I'll make a motion to take a five-minute recess.
I say, support.
Ms. Bobson, support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We reconvene in five minutes. Okay, we'll reconvene the board meeting at 9:24 PM. Do we need a motion for that, do we? I think we actually do.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mrs. Thompson.
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Bobson. To reopen the meeting at 9:25 PM. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Say nay. Motion carried. Meeting is back open. We are now addressing harassment complaint 2020-21-2. The complainant responded in the room, or the respondent liked this, and I know this talked earlier from the turner, open, like, you have a choice, open or close.
It's open.
It's open, okay. Ms. Cooper, would you present your summary, please, or your complaint?
Hold on, yeah. The first part of the complaint was regarding the Facebook post that was shared. Many of you, I will read it when we set out to the podium. Many of you know, "We purchased a home in the Memphis School District, transferred our children this year from Memphis, where I taught for 20 years." I'd like to make the comment there immediately that is a false statement, because they've remained, one of those students who do not take sports, still here in the Memphis School District, so I found that to be false. They have three students, and two that transferred and play sports, one that does not still attend Memphis Schools. Josh has taught there for the last 22 years. With the decision that was very difficult for our family, and we agonize over during quarantine and into the summer. We have had wonderful educators, experiences, friends, and members. We also sold the only home we've ever owned in our neighborhood filled with friends. We left quietly, on our own terms, but don't yield towards anyone. We have had to notice our duty political or stroke of drama, but what our family has endured these last two months have been to be quite candid the worst experience we've ever lived through, in this taxless, emotionally, mentally, financially, and physically. How learning of the transfer of our children to Memphis with MSA alleging our move was, I thought, provocative, which rendered our son ineligible to compete for the entire cross-country season, and that is not true, as we have proven. The biggest reason is because they had not moved, and they did not move until the end of October. ineligible to compete for the entire cross-country season until they investigate and made a decision. Again, not true. If MSA really gets us, our son will be ineligible claim for the entire year of Orlando, and that is true. The primary issue we are most concerned with with this complaint was filed with patients of accusations against our family, and coughing under stress on our children as they transitioned to a new school district. I'd like to say that it is the second time that this student is attending that school district, not the first time, it is the second time. Also, there were no accusations, there were facts. The evidence used against us was not even factual, which was less relevant. Our son's correct name was in the use in the complaint. A simple internet search of any claim would reveal them as untrue. Our formal rebuttal to MSA was forced us to reveal personal or private decisions that dragged both our issues together negative publicity. I don't know what publicity that there was ever drawn into. Our mayor has been forced to respond to the allegations and submit a rebuttal. This intention has caused our children to be in the spotlight of an already emotionally transition from time, putting a mark on their reputation as entering a new school, which is not true, this is the second time, as they're in this, attending that school district, although absolutely no fault of control of their own. They have unfortunately been exposed to new personal politics, or politics of school personnel. Hours of ripped documentation have been necessary to exonerate ourselves, and hundreds of dollars spent legal consultation fees. Our home has been photographed and photos, videos since MSA, and our mayor's schools has evidence that we are violating athletic transfer rules. Our personal decision regarding it was best for our children, and our family as a whole are now primarily motivated by sports, primarily not motivated by sports, but it doesn't say that that's not part of it. In fact, with this current COVID-19 pandemic, sports were never even a guarantee for the school year. We find it intrusive and offensive to have to justify our parenting disclosed personal details for our family and our decisions to strangers and the general public. We are also dumbfounded at the decision, dumbfounded, so the statements presented as factual simply appear not true. This complaint was pulled these two districts, we had worked our entire careers, which we had worked our entire careers, and highly expected, for our professionalism and character into negative publicity. I don't know what publicity, I never shared anything publicly. Any publicity is coming, I believe, just on this Facebook. Statements were published about us with reckless disregard for the truth. Board members have publicly stated their views on the need for new learning, opportunities to help diversify enrollment laws, and attract, entertain students and teachers, but when this is the response to our family, not only has your children's best interest in mind, also has been deeply supportive and vested, one being an employee, so I'm not sure if I'd deal with a parent here or an employee. It sends a message that personal retribution including demonstrates actions that are not appropriate or even ethical towards students and families. I will say that, and again, they already have to say, the parents are able to do as they do, as they choose. This was the fourth transfer in five secure, involving three schools, the fourth. Our family has, and during almost two months of upheaval, and our son has his life vastly impacted through no fault of his own, opportunities to activate and achieve socially, academically, and athletically have all been lost. I am not, I feel sorry for anyone that would have to go through that, but I'm not the one that moved, and from the school district that I think that they've admitted is a great school district. He was training out through quarantine to prepare for his fall athletic season, and these are moments he can never get back. If the appropriate chain of command had been used before pursuing this MSA complaint in the first place, I'd like to stop right there. I don't know where they get that opinion from. I met with administrators in regard to this. They would have been recognized, and that would have stopped before our son could have completed, competed under a residential transfer, which is untrue, and there is no residential transfer waiver, and Mrs. Coon brought earlier that if the house was being built, there is no residential transfer. They cannot supply one, because they do not exist. That's the difference between a residence, but that's not the case. They filed a purchase order, and the purchase order is not binding when it comes to transferring a student, and that's bad. But instead, he's lost almost his entire season due to the publishing of his complaint. No, he's not. He lost the season because they had not moved, period. I can also tell you that another school district filed a complaint, MSA, against their athlete running. Another school district filed a complaint with MSA when he was allowed to run, so we were not the only ones that helped us, and that is what the MSA. A complaint filed this man is not focused on any students' best interests or open meaning is simply inexcusable. A district should be practicing the rights of all students, and this is unprecedented move by this district. No, it's not, we just did it five years ago. By a district against a child, there are no circumstances that warrants this kind of behavior against a student, or his or her family, especially the child and employer. As I said, our school district did this back in 2016. If the board is fully committed to asking hard questions, eliminating nepotism, improving the district, and validating integrity and honesty professionals from all its employees, and preserving the district's reputation as truly about engaging, educating, empowering students no matter where they choose to learn, then full accountability should be required. The situation especially egregious when we consider the negative effects on our students and future, those students' athletic departments are charged with advancing. We are still committed educators and ask to change our passions for teaching. We both want to see Memphis succeed, and we always advocate for change while innovating in our own teaching practice and demanding help from ourselves and our students. And again, I respect all that they are saying there, I couldn't agree with any of that more, but this has nothing to do with the fact that their child was ineligible because they had not moved. We made a major life change for the best interest of our family in the long term, not just a few short years in our teens with high school students. I respect that, and I agree with them. We have been very invested in both districts for years, and continue to hold deep friendship and appreciation for people there. It's very difficult to deal with this situation while teaching in schools in the midst of an investigation. We are not willing to sugarcoat that. Josh and I simply encourage you to invoke yourself in the board meeting and see how the issue is handled. That would speak volumes about what priorities and personnel agenda's members have in mind, especially for a school board election. If you, if you'd like to speak with us privately, the details are, we'd be glad to discuss with you personally, but we're not out to slander or gossip, that is not our intention. We have been very private in our details until now, when we put it on Facebook, about the details that this very true issue does spark. Our purpose in sharing this information, which we have agonized over, agonized over, is to make sure that people know the truth, which sometimes tends, I'm sorry, I lost me, which tends to be withheld from the public, but submitted to the board. I thought that the very stance toward our Memphis School Board very important. Our purpose in sharing this information, which we have not agonized over, is to make sure people know the truth, which sometimes tends to be withheld from the public, but submitted to the board, and perhaps be a catalyst for a real positive change. It can't happen when we allow these to continue as status quo. We never, ever want this to happen to anyone, to any other family or child. We are exhausted, but you know what? We have this good idea, and not our own ability to fix things. We don't know why this happened to us, but many things have fallen into place that cannot be anything but this hand in our family. And for that, we are thankful. We'll not be engaging comments on this post for our own mental health, but thank you for taking the time to read this. We appreciate our friends. We appreciate our friends and family who lifted up during this difficult time. I made my comments regarding the post. Again, at no time, up until this point, did the Coons attempt to talk with me, return phone calls, share any thoughts or anything like that, at no time, even though I have reached out. I can tell you that the second part of my complaint is when a meeting founding was set up, I was faced with aggression, I was faced with inappropriate comments, slandering comments, and unprofessional, unprovoked retaliation by them for me, which stated beginning, I'm sorry, you and your family are going through this, but that I have lived through this myself, so I do understand. With that being said, there's a job to stand by that ethically, and my concern is that this Facebook post was sent out with reckless abandonment. I think that it attacked, battled it to myself, a coup on myself, as well as the athletic department of Memphis, and the Memphis School Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oki.
I'd like to address the Facebook post first. Mr. Oki has said that I used school technology to insult, threaten, and to humanize him, and inappropriately used Facebook during school hours. My post was made on personal time, on my personal account, after school ended for the day. The same type of First Amendment speech has been practiced by both Mr. Oki and other administrators and board members regarding your own personal opinions and statements regarding community and school events, with several directly related to school administration, employees, or events. Mr. Oki states, "I published libelous material that was knowingly false. I posted a timeline of events related to the MHSAA complaint against us, my personal reaction and feelings related to what happened to us as a family, and what we experienced." I never used his name. Mr. Oki says, "I made statements with reckless disregard for the truth." Mr. Oki states, "I accused him as the leader of the Memphis Athletic Department of engaging in personal retribution and unethical behavior." I did not say he engaged in personal retribution. I stated the actions of filing an MHSAA complaint without knowledge or approval of his superintendent, and without fact checking or attempting to vet out the details thoroughly sends a message interpreted by our family as personal retribution. Sharing the personal details of our complaint with parties not relevant to the decision-making process, or who are part of the ARVADA and Memphis School Administration, is indeed unethical. The fact that Mr. Oki did share our information without outside parties prior to our notification of a complaint filing against us, and all throughout the process, was evidenced in our FOIA requests and his own admission during our reviews. Mr. Oki calls my statement of his filing an MHSAA allegedly motivated transfer and unprecedented move by the district as egregious fallacy. We were not aware of any formal complaint that the department officially filed with and fully investigated by the MHSAA. Mr. Oki implies Mr. Goodby took no disciplinary action, and his lack of doing so emboldened my continued inconsistent harassment of him. Mr. Goodby visited my classroom the day I posted this to Facebook to discuss a different matter, and I personally showed him my post on my own, he was unaware of it, and I brought it up, and after asking his opinion on it, I chose to remove it. Mr. Oki accuses me of disparaging Memphis, the athletic department, the Memphis School Board, and all of Memphis Schools. My post actually makes several comments about how we are so appreciative of what Memphis has done for our children, how we still have close friends, we've been invested, and we continue to appreciate the people there. We were asking for accountability, for the truth to be told, and what was best for the district, because we care about the people and the students, and wanted Memphis to succeed. We even addressed this Facebook post with Mr. Oki at our meeting. I said, "I want to go back and review the error. First of all, I didn't name you, and I'm sorry if it made you look bad." The only thing I said was, "What's been done?" We had a complaint filed, this is how we feel, and he brought up a different issue, saying I put that he was jockeying for a full-time position, which I didn't put in my Facebook post. And I asked if I could read it to him to show him that wasn't true. He said, "No, I don't want to read it. I'm just saying, I've never heard it." Um, I'm just saying, I've never heard it. I'm not on Facebook. I don't read it. And then it kind of just the discussion ended there. Usually when I attend a board meeting, it's to share about a grant or to advocate for an educational issue, and I am here today in a position I could never have imagined, which is defending myself against a harassment charge. So the alleged intimidation, insulting, and harassing that I'm accused of is not at all consistent with my character or my reputation in 20 years of exemplary service to the district. Why is this harassment claim but need against me? I believe it's because I chose to stand up for my family and ask for accountability. For two decades, I have often tied to the children of this community before my own kids. And when I went and left, misrepresentations and mistruths were used to discredit or disqualify my own child. And I would like to point back that this was about the child. I have endured what can unincapacitably be called the most difficult year of my career. On November 12th, my husband Josh and I got Mr. Oki to discuss our concerns. Um, this meeting did not have a mutual third-party witness, and before this meeting, we expressed our concerns about that, but that was step one of the board complaint process, and we had anticipated that for our complaint to have aired and move to the next step. We found that very concerning, that there's a step where two parties need to have a third-party witness, which creates an unnecessary situation where one party can make false claims against the other, and there is no way to prove what really happened. And that is exactly what has happened. Um, Mr. Oki filed a harassment complaint against me, making no true statements about what transpired at that meeting. After our first meeting, we indicated to Mr. Goodby we did not feel the complaint had been resolved, and we asked to move to the next step in the policy process. And one week later, Mr. Oki filed a harassment complaint against me, and we mentioned my husband Josh. I was notified of this complaint on November 23rd, 2020, and after that date, received no further documentation, information, or updates regarding that issue until February 11th of 2021. When I was informed, Mr. Oki and his legal representation had decided to continue pursuing this matter against me. Now we are forced to defend ourselves against policy accusations stemming from that meeting, which was in this position, and that's been unnecessary, extremely stressful. Mr. Oki's lawyer has stated that I have altered or edited any recordings of the meeting, and that's why you shouldn't be allowed to hear them. And I don't have anything to hide, which is why I offer them to you or anyone who's asked this for a third-party. Um, I, I don't have anything to hide. Mr. Langdon, this legal counsel stated that we retained a lawyer to nitpick Mr. Oki's challenge of the transfer for son because we realized our claims were baseless. We actually found it necessary to retain a lawyer to defend ourselves against allegations and respond to the kinds of communications that we kept receiving from Mr. Langdon and Mr. Oki that were repeatedly refuting our documentation or fighting a complaint without merit. Mr. Oki retained a lawyer from the very beginning of fighting against our sons with the MHSAA. In fact, his lawyer was scripty to our MHSAA complaint before we ever were notified it was filed against us or even saw it, along with all the information and documentation throughout this process between ourselves, Memphis, ARVIA, and the MHSAA. We wondered why this complaint was put on pause, which is what we were told months ago when we asked about the progress and status of this complaint. When we brought our complaint to the board, Mr. Oki suddenly wanted to bring this complaint forward. If Mr. Oki truly thought that this harassment complaint had merit, why was it not presented from the very beginning? I've never had any personal contact with Mr. Oki outside of these meetings. I have never harassed him in any way, shape, or form. I've never placed him in harm to his person, as he has so claimed, or attacked and insulted him. I don't even work in the same building, so I'm not sure how I've been accused of interfering with his work performance. I have never seen him face-to-face this entire school year outside of any of our meetings. And if he feels worried for his safety and well-being, I'm not sure why this complaint was stalled for months. I would allege that all the things that I've been accused of are exactly what has been done to me. My work performance has been affected. When I've had to maintain my composure while teaching in front of young children as complaint information is delivered to me in person in the middle of class. I have felt harassed and threatened when people photographed my home and inquired about my child at his new school, or while some of his teachers were involved by having disclosed complaint information sent to them. I've been slandered by harassment complaint, which has damaged my name and reputation. My privacy and personal decisions have been made public while information related to this complaint was shared with employees and coaches of this district with whom I work by Mr. Oki, and they should have remained uninvolved. They had no relevance to the complaint process. If you ask anyone in this district or community who truly knows me, if harassing, ridiculing, or intimidating someone sounds like my character or personality, I feel assure you it is not. The he said, she said nature of this complaint is exactly why we express concerns about having to be alone and why we felt it was necessary to protect ourselves by recording meetings. We have now paid thousands of dollars in legal representation to defend our family. The toll that this has taken on myself and my children, this was a child. We keep talking about our family and the employees, but this was about a child. The toll that this has taken on my children for almost eight months is absolutely incalculable. Working in a district where another employee and his legal counsel continually refute our evidence with more mysteries and technicalities, trying to defer and muddy the waters at the 11th hour, sometimes, has been exhausting. This harassment complaint has been exhausting. It's baseless. It's without merit, and I would hope that it will take seriously the filing of a document and the stress that it induces on the person that's being accused.
Thank you, Ms. Kuhn. Open up to the board for questions, whether they complain and they respond. I have a question. Mr. Oki, when did you file this complaint?
In November. Uh, we filed it, Facebook came out in October. I can't remember the date, and then after I met with the Coons at a designated area that was set up by administration, I had offered with Mr. Kraft's approval to have it restored room. I was told that, no, the Coons, they want to come over here to come over my old turf. They weren't comfortable. They wanted to have it over in the elementary. That meeting was, I think, canceled two or three times. And I, and I went over to the, went over to the HELL, met with them. I was faced with ridicule, physical violence. And the next day is when I went and met with Mr. Goodby to follow the complaint.
Okay. Mrs. Kuhn, you, you referred to putting the complaint on pause. Can you expound on that, just so we understand what that was referring to?
So when I was notified about a complaint against me, there was nothing policy-wise done, like there were no more steps taken, there was no communication, like what happens next? It just sat there and nothing was done. So it didn't go, it didn't go through a process. Like, from the time it was filed to this meeting, nothing has happened in between. There was the filing, and it's now. That's it.
You mentioned put on pause. Was that, was that referring to something specific?
Oh, what did it indicate? Their legal counsel contacted the residents, indicated they withdraw the complaint, will withdraw our complaint.
I, I can't answer that.
We were contacted by the legal counsel, indicated he'll withdraw, this complaint will withdraw our complaint, so that is also part of the pause, actually.
You were contacted by Mr. Oki's attorney?
Yes.
Mr. Oki aware of that?
Yeah, that's not accurate, and I'd like to see them produce that. That never took place. We were waiting for it to move forward. It never took place. Finally, in February, we're like, what's going on? It was referred to my attorney that, oh, you asked us to stop this on December 3rd. No, he didn't. Never in writing, no proof of that. And we moved forward in February. Uh, in February, it was a meeting with Mr. Goodby and Mr. Krafta, and Mr. Goodby presented that, well, I don't have any proof of anything, any wrongdoings here, so this is over. I at that time stated, no, I'm not comfortable with that decision. I'd like to move to the next level. There was never, ever anything by me after the November meeting with them, uh, or my attorney, that we would ever stop this.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for the board?
I have a question. Uh, Mr. Oki, you just stated that when you met with Mr. and Mrs. Kuhn, um, you were threatened with ridicule and physical violence.
That's correct.
Okay. Can, can you elaborate on that a little bit for me?
We were sitting across the table from one another. Mr. Kuhn with a bullfist pounding on the table, wanting to share my big toys. I was told that I was unprofessional. I was a jerk. They had contacted all kinds, and this is where, when they say that, you know, they didn't want it out, they said they contacted several A.D.s and several administrators and superintendents and anybody, and they were told that anybody that would do this is a jerk. I said, sorry, I referred to our superintendent because he thought he did the same thing four years ago. Um, I was called a bully. People were leaving the district because of me. I refuse that. But when they pounded the table, I stood up, I backed away from the table, I grabbed my log, I said, this meeting's over. I'm not here for this. I'm here to rectify this. And as I said, I'm sorry that you feel that this is against you, it's against, I'm following my laws, not the guidelines, my laws. And I actually felt I calmed the situation down, sat down, and got another second round of ridicule. And I believe, I believe about our perception, I know that Mr. Kuhn pounded the table with my hand, at which time I then said, this meeting's over. I need to go. I walked out and actually walked into the elementary gym, which, you know, the end there was a witness there. When I came back, Mrs. Kuhn said, obviously, we're going to agree or disagree. I grabbed my stuff.
Okay, um, I'm sorry. Can you remind me again, was this the first time that you met with the Mr. and Mrs. Kuhn?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Book, can I ask a question, please?
Yes, Mr. Book.
Well, I just want to start with a comment first before my question, but, um, driven to Mrs. Kuhn, um, from a perspective of your character, um, I personally would like to say that I think you spoke well of yourself, and what you have said is what most everybody I know feels about you. You are an amazing teacher. You're loved to be having in our district, um, and I want to reiterate that. And your character personally has not been judged by me. Uh, joining the board in, in January, I have not heard of any of this in the community until I became a board member. Um, so I want to get a little reassurance that, and if any reassurance, that this was not information that I heard floating around until I became a board member and was given the information, okay? Um, but my question is, you had just stated that when you filed your complaint, there was almost like a stoppage in your complaint. Who were you going to, to try to get the complaint? I guess it could drive to both of you. Um, were you going to our administrative superintendent? Were you going to Mr. Oki? Who were you going to try to get this complaint moving along, but yet we're not succeeding?
Are you asking, like, who were we asking with the statuses?
Yes, you, you said that there was like a stall after your complaint. We weren't getting answers. We weren't getting any meetings set up. There weren't, things were not happening. Who were you reaching out to to try to get these actions to happen?
I asked Mr. Goodby, what is the status of this complaint? And it was just on pause.
And how long was that pause you estimate?
Well, there was nothing from when I filed until February, when I was told it was quote reinstated, it was Mr. Oki and his legal counsel wanted to report.
Okay, so you were not reached by any administration regarding this, this whole time? And, and, and please apologize, I apologize. What was the exact date of your complaint? Or approximately, you don't have to give it exact, what month was it? Was it in? Well, yes, but I'm talking about the, the, yes, when was, when was the complaint Mr. Oki filed?
November.
November, okay.
November 18th.
November 18th. And when did you reach out following up this complaint?
So I was told November 23rd.
So it was minimal time when you reached back out to administration?
I don't know when it was. I just said, what's the status on this? And I haven't heard anything.
Okay, so from November to February, you received nothing as far as any updates? All right, thank you.
Any other questions for the board?
I have, I have a, I need some clarification on something. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to ask, um, because it's not necessarily a question to either party. Would you prefer me to wait till a board discussion?
If it's not a question, yes, okay. Any other questions?
Mrs. Kuhn, um, so I was trying to find out the social, I don't know, necessarily social media posts that I can find more of a freedom of speech in instructional settings. Is that what we have, right? So the only thing that I think that I want to know is kind of your opinion, um, is on it is, and B, it says refrain, refrain from expressions that would disrupt harmony among coworkers or interfere with the maintenance, um, of discipline by school officials. Do you feel that that Facebook post disrupted the harmony among coworkers, that you have referred to yourself as, you know, an employee and stuff like that in this Facebook post?
I don't know, because when Brad came over to talk to me, and I showed it to him, he said, I'm not comfortable with it. I think it portrays the district in a light, and I said, I respect your opinion, and I turned it down. So I was there for probably four hours.
I know, because we're not Facebook friends, but I was actually in Miami Beach, and I had several school, um, employees call me, and they were screenshotting, sending it to me. So I remember I did call Dave, um, our current president at the time, and he was, because this is similar to the email that you sent us prior to this post, and he wanted to contact Brad and sent Brad over there to take it down. So this is why, that's my only question, is do you feel like that would have disrupted the harmony among the coworkers that for like policy reasons, for breaking, you know, do you feel like that this disrupted the harmony, or the harmony was already disrupted?
I don't think, I said anything that was not already known. I mean, I stated the facts of what happened. There was a complaint filed. This is how we felt about it. And there are still, I would say the majority of the ways that I have no idea what has happened. They don't even know this is a thing. So I, I really can't say that.
You don't feel like there were relationships or anything like that have been disrupted, then?
With my coworkers?
With, well, in general, and your coworkers, because you made a comment before that was hard for you to work and everything like that. And Oki explained the exact same thing.
It was hard for me to work, not because of my coworkers. It was hard for me to work because I had to communicate regarding this stuff while I'm teaching.
Okay.
Like, it would interrupt my school day, and I have to emphasize, hey, buddy, this harassment, go back to teaching.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kirk, could I ask, could I ask Mr. Goodby, why, if a complaint was filed November 18th, um, nothing's, you know, he told her on the 23rd, what happened between them and now as far as the school policy on the complaint? Mr. Goodby?
So, uh, received it on, excuse me, November 18th, as you said. Mr. Oki and I finally sat down on November 24th to discuss the complaint. After going through all the points of this complaint, at the very end, he talked about moving forward, and he said to me, he was not comfortable meeting again with Coons, but he would discuss it with his attorney to move forward. Um, did not hear anything back, so I reached out to Mr. Oki on December 3rd at 11:16 and asked him to take, see if you wanted to go, if you wanted to proceed with the complaint that filed, and if you had any questions regarding moving forward. Um, I did not get a response from Mr. Oki, however, his attorney called me that afternoon. That attorney called me, let me mess it to 11 on the December 3rd, and I returned the call at 3 o'clock. During our conversation, he said, let's hold off on our moving forward with Greg's complaint until after we have further information or resolution with Merron's complaint. If resolved, likely that Greg's complaint would go away. So that was in a phone conversation with Mr. Oki's attorney. Then again, I, I took notes. Then again, I took notes on it, have it in my notepad, date and timestamp because I figured it was going to be questioned. This was held off until I was again reached out to by Mr. Langman, I forget the date. Just looks like February tenth, again on a phone conversation. We talked about it, he at that point said, "I must have misunderstood him." When we talked until three, that he does not remember telling me to hold off. He did not agree that he would have said that and the complaint might most likely go away at that time. I asked clearly, "Do you want me to move forward with that?" He said, "Yes, that's why we're going to move forward further with that complaint process."
Mr. Goodby, was there any explanation to the Coons regarding the timeline?
We've had several conversations, but nothing. I wasn't weekly updating that I hadn't heard anything back at that time. You know, again, we're notified it's put on hold, that was all.
Mr. Goodby, could you just repeat that second part of what you stated from the attorney conversation? I'm not sure that I heard it correctly.
The original attorney conversation on December third?
Yes, I... Yes, you stated that on December third, the attorney said to hold off, wait for a resolution, and then what was the next conversation you had with the attorney?
February tenth.
Okay.
And at that point, he claimed that he must have misunderstood him when we talked on December third and that he does not remember telling me to hold off. He did not agree that that was the right thing to do and said that his complaint would most likely go away. He doesn't remember saying that and that if it was resolved. And that's when we moved forward with the complaint process.
Okay, thank you.
Can I have some clarification on Mr. Goodby, please? So on December third, you and the attorney agreed to put this complaint on hold. And then February tenth was your next discussion with the lawyer regarding the misunderstanding? These are the dates you had just said?
Those are correct.
So we have two months that it's gone by. Were either Mr. Oki or the Coons updated during these two months regarding any of this by yourself?
No, I just mentioned that we had one conversation about it being on hold. The ball was in Mr. Oki's court. I think there was, and I don't have it here in front of me, I had to dig through my email, there was a conversation, I mean, just an update request at one point, but nothing, not weekly from either party.
And then do you have a typical procedure you follow? Or is there one that you're going to be putting in place so there is not the lag and the individuals involved having a two-month time period appearing nothing?
Yes, I can put something in place when it's put on hold by the complaining party. I don't know how often I should request.
Well, that's what I'm saying, this is why, this is exactly what I'm addressing, is if we could possibly maybe...
Yeah, absolutely, can you follow up?
Because I just think that in itself there was probably problematic for both parties. It just maybe fueled the fire, say, a little bit, not having any feedback for two months. Just a suggestion. But then I have one more initial question or another question for the Coon family here. I'm so sorry that your children were affected by this situation. I would like to know, and if you're willing to share, could you enlighten me a little bit on how your children had been harassed or had been affected emotionally, physically by this? And also, were kids critically ridiculing them? Or was it just they were overhearing you two discussing the situation?
He, he worked for probably a campaign about why he couldn't participate. He said, "It was that an M J S A, like, I don't understand what happened, explain the process." Obviously that was upsetting, we can't participate. He knew he could participate, so he moved, said, "Cool," and he traded for schools. But the possibility of knowing he put in place words at all on here is kind of a little over. And then you're supposed to get really aggressive and then you didn't, you didn't try to talk to her. So a lot of waiting, pleasure to make to that stressful. A couple of times, kids, friends contacted him and said that things were being said about them by other kids at Memphis, particularly basketball players who played with them a year before. Yeah, Mr. Oki's the coach of the basketball team and there were references made to our son several times about how they were too good for them or something like that. And I thought I was there, I think, or I got into a teenager telling a teenager something that we were so...
Exactly.
We spent so many hours trying to prove that we weren't lying, trying to prove that what someone else said is not true, trying to prove that this complaint was uncouted. And it was, we could have just, like, just let us move. We just wanted to move, we didn't want anything like this to happen.
Now, was your student still in Memphis when he was getting harassed by Memphis students or was he already...
He wasn't getting harassed by Memphis students.
Oh, I thought that's what you just said, he was getting comments from Memphis.
He was saying that his friends who were still in Memphis were telling him, "Hey, kids at school are talking about you." "Hey, kids at school are saying this about you." Kids were saying this because of this.
And at any point in time, did you reach out to Mr. Goodby or Mr. Craft saying, "Hey, this is happening, technically it is bullying"?
We didn't feel it, it was more like his friends were saying, "Hey, this is what's happening at school."
Just kind of informative?
Right. I think the biggest thing for our children at our data is two of the people that were just here that contributed information for Mr. Oki and kind of bolstered that, that letters of support for his statements, several of them all saying, they're like kids' teachers, like, he's in one of their classes right now.
He's going to school.
He's going to school, he's... Are involved, trying to make him eligible, like, he kind of doesn't, he doesn't fix him a very awkward situation.
We actually had that set down meeting.
Now, and I can appreciate the fact that you're open and candid with your child because especially at that age, I just wanted a better understanding of exactly what he was experiencing. Now, has your other child received any harassment or...
No, my middle daughter is eight years old, she's, she's kind of, I mean, she kind of knows what's going on. She knows it's been stressful and kind of tumultuous, but I don't think it's really upset her. My youngest going here, I think my stress and our anxiousness, that is really rolled onto her. And it's not necessarily because of anything specific that's done or said, it's just parents get...
Exactly, exactly.
...a challenging situation, but...
I just wanted to clarify that they were not getting bullied, that they were, that it was being addressed and how this distress came about, you know, for your children.
I think for my son, he kind of just, he's like, "Why would you care if I were, like, what's to be done?" He didn't understand this whole political thing, like, it doesn't need to answer, so I'm just moving on.
Okay, I'm just going to interrupt, that's a point of order here and of information. We are discussing the harassment complaint twenty twenty, twenty-one, two. We need to stay within the bounds of what that complaint is. Please, when asked questions, and sort of ask us to direct our questions towards that complaint. We're looking to conclude that complaint in the same manner that we, in one of the four same manners that we did earlier.
And Mr. Cook, I just wanted clarification, you know, that was her response to Mr. Oki's complaint?
Mr. Cook, I have, I have a question for Mr. Goodby. There was, you were going through a timeline and then we got to February tenth and then there is a letter that you, there was a determination that you made based on our school policy, thirty-three sixty-two, our anti-harassment policy. And I was just, you know, and you had made a determination regarding this. Were you asked to make a determination that is, you know, I mean, we were having you take care of it, right? That's what we were, we kind of were like, okay, take, you know, take care of the problem. But then it wasn't accepted, but I just was asking you on your determination how you came to that.
Yes, so part of the procedure was to do an investigation, meet with the parties, talk about the incident and go through everything and then make my determination, obviously. With everything there, that's our policies, the Facebook post, conversations had about, you know, how the parties felt during the meetings, after the meetings, at that point in time. It was my determination that it did not satisfy the harassment level.
I have a question for Mr. Goodby. I just want to make sure I'm clear on this, it's kind of confusing. So as of November, when you were, when you were, or December, I'm sorry, when you were told to hold off by Mr. Oki's attorney, there was no communication back to him, that you had talked to his attorney and no communication to the Coons, correct? It was just kind of left in limbo?
No, there was communication.
Which allows the fire to build?
There was communication that it was put on hold.
To who?
To the Coons and what Mr. Oki's lawyer is the one who brought it to me.
But they don't know, he apparently didn't know and they didn't know.
I was directed by Mr. Oki to have all conversations go through his lawyer.
Oh, Mr. Oki?
So when I reached out to Mr. Oki that day on December third, he must have contacted his lawyer to call me because that's when he called me, right after the email was sent to him. So then at that point is when Mr. Langman said to me, "Let's hold off until we have a resolution from the Coon harassment." They were informed of that and I don't know if they made that clear, but the Coons were informed and then it was put on pause.
Okay, that's where I need to clarify, so both of them were informed, both of them knew it'd be on hold?
Yes. The long gap, there was not a lot of communication in the long gap. I completely hold up to that.
Okay. You have a question?
I don't know.
Okay. Well, I, I would say tonight is, is not the time to debate what was done with the complaint. I think that's a different conversation. I will say that the, this board just this evening passed a new, you know, policy or an amended N L policy. The policy committee worked on to attach timelines to any complaint that will prevent someone from waiting for an extended period of time, anyone on a complaint, which is important, I think it's, it is important if anyone's ever had a complaint against them in life and in any work, you want to take it care of right away so that you can move on. So that policy was amended tonight. Any other questions about the harassment complaint? Here, no further questions. I would ask the board, does anything they'd like to discuss before we close and conclude this complaint?
Mr. Cook?
Yes, ma'am.
I think one of the things that I am struggling with is that I almost feel like we have retaliation going in and that when a decision was questioned and falsehoods were given, we put a harassment complaint against someone, but then periodically, from what he said, what Mr. Goodby had said, it's, "We'll drop it if you drop yours." And then it's just not, that's almost a retaliation, which we have policies against that too. And it concerns me that we're going to that level. That I think that we need to stick with Brad's investigation that this did not come to the level of harassment by our school board policy and that this harassment complaint be dropped at this point in time or that it is the action taken that did not come up to the level of harassment be with, not the help.
Okay.
So, I, I, there's parts of that I agree with. I think it's important to understand that the complaint is this Facebook post, which happened long before any conversation with an attorney. So to say that this post was made before that, and frankly, you know, there are things within this post that don't pertain to Mr. Oki but are potentially damaging to the, to the district. Now, Mrs. Coon told us that she chose to take it down from visit by Mr. Goodby. So it was up for, I guess, in terms of about four hours, what I've gathered. I never saw it honestly until somebody, until it got sent out. So I think the, you know, our choices here are no different with any complaint and that is a complaint that has been, that has been closed as of March eleventh, twenty twenty-one. So our choice now is to either take no action or the other choices that I've read off before. So we're not, we either close out this complaint or we don't. As far as determining if there is a retaliation, that would be a separate subject. That's not, that's not on the floor for this complaint. As I stated, well, I'll hold that thought. Any other question or any other discussion from the board?
I have something.
Okay.
I need a little bit of clarification. Mr. and Mrs. Coon came to the school and filed a complaint as parents, correct? So if they did that as parents of a student and they met with Mr. Oki on the, for the first meeting without a witness, they did that as parents with an athletic director. And then after that meeting, he filed a harassment complaint. I think what the gray area for me is that Mr. and Mrs. Coon are, they're approaching this as parents. And if this was any other parent, Mr. Oki would not be able to file a harassment complaint through the school.
Well, I would say that the complaint was based on thirty-three ten B, thirty-three sixty-two, and thirty-three sixty-two point oh-one, which are, and what you would find is the complaint is against the employee, not the parent. And that is based on, you couldn't make a complaint against a parent for posting something on Facebook. Fortunately or unfortunately, that's, you have no say over the parent. There are different rules at the game when, and as a child of an educator, both who followed me throughout my K through twelve career. There is, that is a gray area that then puts a post on our employees, school employees cannot post anything they want on social media. That's why we have policy thirty-three ten B, which is what was, which is what is alleged by Mr. Oki's complaint. So it is different, is, is, first complaint we heard this evening was, "Parent, this complaint is employee, against employee for lack of..."
Okay, and so to be clear, and I just need to be clear for my own understanding. Even though Mrs. Coon posted something on Facebook, which is her own personal account, basically she's held to a different standard simply because she's an educator here at the school?
Yes, if a, if a school employee posts that, you know, a fictitious school posts that their principal, Mr. Jackson is the biggest jerk in the world and stole money from the, you know, makes an allegation like that, yes. and stole money from the, you know, makes an allegation like that, yes, that, that is, most businesses, including this school, have a policy for social media as well as freedom of speech, which, you know, it's important to understand, we have freedom of speech, but within your employee employer relationship. I have freedom of speech at work, I can't tell the owner that I think he's a big jerk because he can say, "You don't work here." I can still say it, but there might be a consequence to that. So there is a different standard for the school employee.
Thank you.
Yes.
And I think just to clarify, just to clarify, that's not really specific just for like this, like me as a nurse in the hospital, even if I go to an ER as a patient, have a terrible experience, I can't talk about that terrible experience I had where I was getting fired. I think that goes against a lot of our policies, not just specifically.
Mr. Cook, I would like to make a motion that we upheld what has been done and that the dismissal of this complaint because it does not meet our board policy of harassment.
Support.
Was there any complaint?
Yeah.
Ms. Thompson? I didn't write that down, Ms. Thompson, can we go with "take no action," is that okay?
Sure.
Motion by Ms. Thompson, "Take no action on complaint supportive of Mrs. Boxey," any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by name? Motion carries harassment complaint 2021, 2020, 2021-2. Board has taken no action. We will move on to appeal. Mr. Oki, open or close?
Open.
Okay. Go ahead and state your summary, please.
At first something to start off is that the action that was taken place in regards to my, my rightful, ethical portion of Mr. Goodby, if I could go through the, the day consisted of an email first sent by Mr. Goodby saying he'd like to meet with me regarding this situation and hopefully we can put this behind us, behind us. Mr. Kraft was invited to that meeting. When we got to the meeting, Mr. Goodby, very eloquently, for the first time in four years, gave me a gift, which I appreciated, but, you know, was positive and I felt comfortable with that. He then proceeded to share with me, Mr. Kraft, that he has reached out to the Coons on several occasions, that they weren't getting a response from them, that they wanted to move forward. He also said that he shared with the Coons that we did our job, that we were right in what we did, that there was nothing wrong with what we did. And then we moved forward, and then we did our job. He then reached over and he slipped me over a piece of paper. My first contention was, I saw the word unethical. Well, if we did our job, what was unethical? He did not supply me anything in writing, he did not verbally explain any of it at that time. My first contention is, I was written up under policy number 32, 3210 staff ethics and the athletic director does not fall under that in any way she performed. So I don't know how I was written up under a policy that I don't even, my, my, as an athletic director, my party administrator falls under, if you read it, there are several people that fall under that. It is not the athletic director, number one. Number two, if we did our job, then what am I being written up about? The next day, or I'm sorry, that afternoon, I sent an email to Mr. Goodby. I'd say, "I'd like to have the things that I was written up about." Because the piece of papers that I received at that meeting didn't stand anything. Now, he informed me that, well, the student name submitted is Cameron Ashen and Camden. I will report that it was only on the one, the very first thing. That's because I had proof written, changed it a few times, his spell checks changed it. And when I noticed it after that, a couple of times I actually changed it back. For some reason, spell check kept changing it from his actual name to the name that unfortunately, that only one document was said as Camden. He said that the statement regarding playing AU basketball, student is not a member of the AU, right? He said he verified this by checking AU membership lookups. And I've shared with the board, four athletes that played AU. One is a board member's relative here, one is a former board member's son, one is a coach who I think he just left, Mr. and Mrs. Coon's son, and a party that's not here. All the four that I sent, you will see that only one of them show that they were registered. The reason being is because this is an organization that, it's about money. You have to register every year. And there are student athletes that, you know, have played, I can tell you one that played six years. But it shows he's not registered. Because you have to register and pay a fee as a logist of each year. So I thought that that claim by Mr. Goodby is a completely false statement. That if he had thoroughly investigated, he would have seen, he would have known that. Not saying, "Well, they're not members of the AU because they don't show up on here." And as I said before, AU, I know a party, and again, I think the mother's here, where their son went through another person's house to pick up a jersey just to wear. You know, there's not even a roster involved in most AU that they're partaking in. So I have a concern with that. I believe those are false statements to support something that's just not true. Identified parent as assistant coach from track across country at Armada. I believe I proved earlier that a volunteer is part of it. I submitted to you an email from the Armada Track Coach CC coach that said, "Yes, he's volunteered. Yes, he's clerked. Yes, he's been paid sometimes, sometimes not because sometimes you're not good." That's coming from the Armada coach that has supplied it. That's not coming from me. He says he contacted them to say they identified assistant coach that is regularly involved in the team. There's no word in evidence they have that it says that, there's no bylaw that says that. It says any doubt about volunteers. So multiple statements of petition that were provided as evidence were based on hearsay, whether it's supported or approved by evidence. Again, not true. I supplied witnesses, I supplied written statements. I supplied my own word that in the four years that I've been here, I've never been called unethical in question line or anything like that. And if anyone knows me, knows how that it might have been against him. And all this took place with our principal there. When I then asked, I said, "Well, I am going to appeal this." Because I don't believe unethical is, you know, any reason why I should be written up because I don't believe I was unethical in any way, shape, or form. My stuff has been substantiated. My witnesses, proof, writers. And I know earlier was questioned, as I showed this to Mr. Goodby, that Joe Dumars is, and was, I should say, digital log assistant, an AU, an AU facility. Right here, AU basketball team in Rochester Hills, Joe Dumars, Steel House, and Shelby Tompkins. At no time did I lie, at no time was I an ethical. I was written up under a policy that I cannot be written up under. I was written up with no substantiated proof of that. I substantiated all my facts. I was told I did my job, and I'm petitioning it because of that. There are similar things that were said the night that I know are not true. I'll save those for a later date that don't pertain with this particular, this particular writer. I wasn't written up under a policy that exists for me. There's no substantiation to anything except some false, false accusations, some false innuendos. Nothing, I proven regarding that one thing is not true. I had a witness there, and that is why I contend that this write-up should not be allowed. When I wrote up, when I contacted Mr. Goodby and said, you know, "I'm going to appeal this," his first words were, "Well, it's unappealable." I don't believe that's, you know, response that you're looking for when nothing has been substantiated. Nothing was shared with me until after I said I'm going to appeal it. And everything is appealable, even if you have to go with the court law. So, you know, there's been a lot of things that have been said out there, a lot of things have been said today. Not one thing has been proved that I was not accurate or that I was unethical. Not one in writing has been proved that it was, I was unethical, that I lied, or misinformed anybody. Nothing's been proved, one word against another. Yet I have, I have incurred substantial evidence, witnesses to the lie. So I respectfully request that my written reprimand be dispensed. For one, merit one, doesn't even fall under that. Two, was told I did my job. And three, nothing's substantiated unethical behavior. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oki. Questions from the board for this appeal?
Mr. President, to be completely honest, I'm not sure why, whether we agree with anything that he's right or wrong with the written reprimand. Our board policy 1439, we should not even be hearing this appeal. There should be no appeal for written reprimand. In our board policy, the first one's a written warning, written reprimand, suspension, discharge, and a financial penalty in accordance with commission law. Anything that appears with the disciplinary action beyond the written reprimand may be necessary. This superintendent should contact the board to discuss it. Superintendent's discussion opposed any disciplinary action that is not subject to board review is final. So anything beyond written, written reprimand, starting a suspension, suspension, paid or unpaid, is when us as board members will get involved. Regardless of how we feel about whether this was warranted or not, it is against our board policy to even be hearing this, in my opinion. I, at this point, to expedite everything. And Mr. Oki has a chance to rebuttal anything in his written reprimand. And he should, as that is everybody's right. But there, we shouldn't even be hearing this, in my opinion. This is against our board policy.
Mr. Cook, can I say something, please?
Yes.
I completely agree with, you know, this is the reason why we have procedures in place and policies. My only issue is, is in this reprimand, that there is a, part of it is no policy to support. So this is where I'm torn, because we have a policy about not being able to appeal a reprimand, but yet there's information in there that there's not a policy to support, why it should have been written up under number three, under violation in policy. Where it states, "Dr. Supervisor was not kept informed or consulted prior to submission of petition to the MHSAA." There is no procedure in place, or was at that time, that he had to go to his dr. supervisor before he filed that complaint. So I'm, I'm really torn right now because Ms. Boxey is correct, but then there's also this in, this reprimand that should not be in there. So again, there's, there's information in this reprimand that should not be there. But I do, I understand completely Amanda and Ms. Boxey were not in it. But this is the problem I'm having. There, there's an area in here that should not have even been put in there because there was no procedure to follow that.
And again, that could be part of his rebuttal. He could, he could write that out into his rebuttal as long, and also he quotes the professional ethics, which he's right, it does not technically meet him. We don't have an integrity ethics policy either, which is, we will obviously have to make one. But technically, he didn't have to quote a policy either, if I understand me correct. He doesn't have to technically write a quote a policy either. So those are all things that Mr. Oki can put in his rebuttal. But at this point, I don't see how we can do any actions on it, even requiring Mr. Goodby to change his write-up. That's something that Mr. Oki would have to put in his rebuttal. Anything besides a, and my opinion, no action because we should not be, we should not be hearing this.
So how will this be handled, Mr. Cook, rebuttal and then back to another hearing?
That is up to the board.
I make a motion that the board take no action on this because it is not our board policy.
Support.
I have a motion by Ms. Thompson, supportive of Mrs. Boxey taking no action on the appeal. Any further discussion?
I have one question, where does rebuttal go to? Only the immediate supervisor initially? And then, then it can come to us if it's not, it cannot go anywhere. It's for our, it's for our, with no alteration, I mean, it's, it's there even though it may be incorrect.
Policy, I'm reading right, 8320. So there can be an appeal of personnel file for accuracy and detail, personnel file. Superintendent Chubb, I don't know if I have it to say.
And personnel will be appealed and terminated on record as to its accuracy, completeness, relevance, or timeline. She'll make a request in writing to the administrator delegated to maintain the record and specify therein. It goes on here a bit. The employee may submit a written statement that contains five sheets of eight and a half by one page paper explaining employee's position, certain statements should be kept in employee's file. Motion on the floor, Hart, you said, any further discussion?
Hi, Mr. Cook, I'm just drawing on this one, I'll be honest, because I, I understand where the motion's going, but there is false information in this write-up. And it's proven false information because there was no procedure in place. So I will tell you right now, I'm stuck.
Yes, we are, we are stuck by the policy that limits our ability to do anything with this tonight. You are correct. Any further discussion?
Can I, I guess I need clarification. So the best that can be done is this is added to Mr. Oki's personnel file? And a correction or some notification that this was not acceptable?
Our policy states that he may, he may write a written statement that is kept in employee's file. Ms. Boxey is correct that it's a little gray, but, but the administrative, administrative discipline guidelines do state that administrative discipline that is not subject to board review is final. Although the subject to board review is somewhat alluded to, it's not, it's not. Although the subject to board review is somewhat alluded to, it's not, it's not extremely clear. I think on sidebar fourteen-thirty-nine probably needs to be revisited by the policy committee if that's not for tonight. Further discussion?
So it can go in the file or not go in a file or rebuttal?
A rebuttal would go in the file or into policy.
My concern is, when I requested to put situations in a file, in an employee's file, I was told that couldn't be done. And that was several board meetings ago. And it was at the end of an evaluation, and I said, "Then I would like some things put in the file." And I was told that it could not be done. In fact, one board member said, "How do you do that?"
Well, that'd be a different situation. This is a rebuttal of discipline. I think you're speaking of a little bit different situation, but this is directly, this is directly called out as a discipline. A rebuttal to a disciplinary action that is in someone's file. Any further discussion? Hearing none, there's a motion on the floor by Ms. Thompson supporting Ms. Bobson to take no action on appeal. All in favor, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then you call the roll, please.
Mr. Cook?
No.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. McPugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Durst?
No.
Mrs. Bobson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rosenau?
Yes.
Mrs. Drew?
No.
Laura wants to count there, please. Sorry, I lost count.
Four to three.
Four to three.
In favor.
In favor, okay, motion passed. That completes the appeal. We move on to superintendent comments.
Mrs. Thompson, just being here, could you turn the mic down? Just a few things, on May fourth, the St. Clair County Health Department will be bringing a team up here to provide a vaccine clinic for students sixteen and up. It's a great opportunity for our students to receive first vaccine. They'll be doing Pfizer, Moderna, information to provide to the community tomorrow. There's follow-up information going out as well later this week. We've received some outstanding news this morning, contacted by the Aeneid Foundation, that Paula Dana won a $10,000 grant to a technology shopping spree with office people. We had a conversation on Friday with Aeneid Foundation. It was kind of implied that we were going to win, and we received the official notification this morning. Just outstanding, $10,000, and she is pretty excited. I think they're going to do some things in the office here, the lounge, has crew set up for our staff, but just wanted to congratulate her for applying to that grant. I mentioned earlier, the athletic testing's been a great, great resource for us to kind of keep an eye on our COVID numbers. We are likely probably going to be moving into a Monday morning to make sure that we have the full forty-eight hours between kids getting together. I think we found out today that testing on Sunday evening, the forty-eight hour window is pretty close to having to trace all throughout school day. So we don't want to have to tiptoe around that. So we're going to a Sunday morning, I'm sorry, a Monday morning, or if you go back, forty-eight hours to Saturday. Most of our teams, you know, if they are competing, they would be dealing with quarantine. We wouldn't have to trace throughout school day. And again, I talked about Lindsay Chalk doing an awesome job with the Abuse Midwest Council, and I appreciate her time coming here and the elementary school being open to it, so. Other than that.
Any questions for Mr. Goodby this evening? Before we move into board roundtable, I was just informed that Laura's birthday. Happy birthday. We'll get you out of here before eleven. Board roundtable, anything from the board this evening?
Mr. Cook, I just want to just thank Mr. Prepa and Mr. Goodby for, for going ahead with prompt under the stars. It's, I think, just the real encouragement to the kids that they can do something like that. Not going to happen, now why is it in your letter?
I think that my, you were on vacation.
I, that's what happens when you're on the beach. Oh goodness sakes, I'm sorry, I apologize. I was, that's too bad. Okay, all right, okay, well, thanks for your try.
Believe me, I try very hard.
Anybody else?
I just want to make a comment in general. I think it's very important that we let the community aware that this board is diligently working on changing policies and procedures to follow. I think not everybody's seen what's behind the scenes. You don't realize it until you are on the school board to understand why things do not progress to the next step. It's because we have not had procedures and policies replaced for numerous things. And I think it's very important for our community and families and everyone to understand that we're working hard at making changes, positive changes for our district. I just don't feel that it's been out, been set out there enough to the community. So that's all I wanted to say, and we will continue. I know I can speak for myself to make a positive difference and work very hard to just bring good to the community in this district.
Thank you, Mrs. Drew, anybody else? I just got to do things. Thank, thank goodness somebody, really two things. One, if you're still watching this on Channel Six, please get out and vote. Please get out and vote favorably for our schools. We need to support on both ballot items that are coming up on the vote. And then I would, I would close the evening with a quote that I've used several times over the last six months that I believe has some, has some merit this evening. And that is a quote by a rather famous guy named Abraham Lincoln. And Abraham Lincoln said, this is quite personal to me for many reasons, but he asked or said, "How do I defeat my enemies?" He said, "By making known my friends." With that, I'm going to take a motion to close.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at ten fifty PM.
I support.
Motion by Ms. Bobson, supported by?
Rosenau.
Rosenau, thank you, it's the only time I miss tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to adjourn the meeting adjourned. Have a good evening, everybody.